Meeting is called to order. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission January 14, 2021 meeting. Since we are in unusual circumstances where we're meeting remotely, for the most part, except for me and a few others here in City Hall, I have an opening statement to tell everyone how this meeting is going to proceed, and so that we're all on the same page going forward. So, good evening. This is the regularly scheduled January 14 meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, the chairman of this commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I'm joined by Community Development Director David DeGroot, City Planner Jayden True, City Attorney Ron Sandak, and our public hearing transcriber Paula Klatch. Tonight's meeting is being conducted virtually by video conference utilizing the GoToWebinar virtual platform. The meeting will proceed without a physical present quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission in strict adherence to the Governor Pritzker's Disaster Declaration Executive Order 2020-74 related to the COVID-19 pandemic and public health concerns affecting the city of Geneva. As a requirement of the Opens Meeting Act, I'm required to be physically present at the meeting location. With the exception of limited staff and myself, all commissioners and applicants participating in tonight's meeting are at different locations in according to social distancing guidelines. The Planning and Zoning Commission would like to emphasize that this body is authorized to continue business during the COVID-19 declaration through virtual platforms such as this one. A virtual public meeting will be held tonight for the Item 5A regarding Emma's Landing. With our use of electronic meeting platform for this meeting, there may be some technical difficulties as we move through our agenda, so please bear with us. Every individual desiring to listen and/or participate in the meeting has been provided that opportunity through virtual participation information, including various public notes and the agenda for this meeting. Letters have been sent to property owners within 500 feet of the proposed project identifying those individuals, a date, time, format, and subject of the public hearing. A public notice of the same information was also published in the Daily Herald 15 days prior to tonight's public hearing. All interested parties are invited to present testimony forward against petition and to cross-examine witnesses presenting testimony forward against a petition. At this point, I will describe the remote public hearing proceedings of the Planning and Zoning Commission for those who are not familiar with the process. First, the public hearing will be open, and the petitioner will provide an overview of the contemplated development and will present any supporting plans or exhibits. Following the presentation, commission members will have the first opportunity to ask the petitioner questions. After the initial questions by commission members, members of the public who have an opportunity to present evidence and testimony forward against the application and cross-examine the petitioner. Public participants may provide testimony either through written comments or by speaking at the meeting. All members of the public providing evidence and testimony are also subject to cross-examination by other members of the public and/or the commission. Members speaking during the public hearing agree and understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Members of the virtual audience who wish to speak will then be asked to raise their hands through the virtual meeting platform raising hand feature. Audience members will be then called on, unmuted, and given an opportunity to comment. If you speak multiple times, please state your name each time. If your comment has already been made or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from varying off-topic and direct comments to the subject matter. After providing comment, each speaker will be muted once again. Please note that there may be a slight delay between becoming unmuted and being able to begin speaking. All comments will be recorded so that the written transcript and minutes can be prepared for this meeting. Just a reminder that all speakers are asked to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. It should be mentioned that in the event that not all the members of public have presented desired testimony during the allotted time at this evening's meeting, the public hearing may be continued at a future meeting. At the end of the public testimony, the petitioner will have an opportunity to answer questions and respond to any comments made to the members of the public. The public hearing will then be closed, and the commission will begin their deliberation. In order to reduce background noise, I remind commissioners to unmute themselves -- or to mute, I'm sorry, to mute themselves except when they are addressing the commission or the applicant. Commissioners will also need to state their name prior to provide a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, myself saying aye, nay, or sustain. Okay? So, that's the procedure we're going to follow this evening. So, last week, please call the roll.
Yes, I can. Evans?
Here.
Halloman?
Here.
Metaskill?
Here.
Mead?
Here.
Rittenhouse?
Here.
Slifka?
Here.
Stocking? And I'm here as well.
All right, you have a quorum.
All right. Yeah, I'll try to do that. So, on the roll call, please, on the approval of the agenda, if you're -- we're going to take a roll call vote on that as well. All items need a roll call vote. When you make your vote, please state your last name or Commissioner Rittenhouse, whatever your motion is or action. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Commissioner Evans, move to approve.
Thank you.
Stocking, Slifka.
Very good. Celeste, please call it.
Okay. Halloman?
Yes.
Evans?
Aye.
Metaskill?
Aye.
Mead?
Aye.
Rittenhouse?
Aye.
Slifka?
Aye.
Stocking?
And Stocking is aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so guys, please, before you make your vote or whatever, please state your name, your last name, so that the public knows who you are. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes, December 10, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Evans, move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Mead, second.
All right. Celeste, please call the roll.
Okay, for the minutes, Evans?
Aye, Evans.
Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
And Chairman Stocking?
Stocking is aye.
That passes?
All right, very good. All right, so we'll move on to the public hearing. Item on our agenda this evening, it's for Emma's Landing, and we're considering an annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, a preliminary and final plat of subdivision, and the final plan unit development plan to allow the construction of 45 affordable rental town home project. It's generally located north of Lewis Road in the Heritage Court intersection, and the applicant is the Burton Foundation, represented by Tracy Manning. David, what do we have for the record?
The contents of the file for this application include an application filed by the Burton Foundation requesting annexation, a comprehensive plan amendment, preliminary and final plat of subdivision approval, and final planned unit development approval, a preliminary and final plat of subdivision, and final plat of planned unit development for Emma's Landing, prepared by civil and environmental consultants, a plat of annexation prepared by civil and environmental consultants, a plat of dedication prepared by civil and environmental consultants, preliminary land development plans for preliminary and final subdivision plat approval for Emma's Landing, prepared by civil, environmental consultants, a preliminary and final landscape plan prepared by the Lanark Group, renderings and elevations for Emma's Landing's three-unit townhomes prepared by Allen Peppa Architects, renderings and elevations for Emma's Landing's four-unit townhomes prepared by Allen and Peppa Architects, renderings and elevations for Emma's Landing's office and garden storage, again, prepared by Allen Peppa Architects, a traffic and parking summary prepared by Gwald Hamilton Associates, a land cash contribution worksheet, a copy of ordinance 9130 granting a special use as a R1 planned unit development for Sterling Manor, a copy of ordinance 201337 amending the Sterling Manor planned unit development to allow alternative Area IV to be developed as single-family attached dwellings, a copy of the land use opinion application filed with the Kane-Dupage Soil and Water Conservation District, a copy of the land use opinion report prepared by the Kane-Dupage Soil and Water Conservation District, a copy of the real estate purchase agreement between the city of Geneva and Burton Foundation, minutes from the March 12, 2020, concept review before the Planning and Zoning Commission, a copy of the option agreement for parcel 120820064, a draft affordable housing agreement per Chapter 16 of the zoning ordinance, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated January 14, 2020, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on December 30, 2020, and a copy of the notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet. Finally, I'd like to note that we have also received a lot of written comments from the public which have been posted in the Agenda Center on the city's website under the Minutes tab for this evening's meeting. A link to those comments was emailed to all of the commissioners earlier this afternoon or this evening. Those are all the contents of the file.
All right, thank you very much, David. So, again, just to remind everybody that's on the session, the process we're going to follow is first we hear from the applicant, then commissioners will get an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant, we'll then open it up for the public to comment, and the fourth item will be an opportunity for the applicant to answer questions that came out of the public comment and anything that the commission had to add over that time. Okay? So, given that, let's hear from Tracy Manning, the applicant. Tracy, are you with us? Yeah, I did see her on the screen, but I haven't seen her recently.
Hey, can you hear me now?
I can hear you. I can't see you, though.
Can you see me here?
No, I do not.
Hmm, I don't know why.
I did see you earlier, before the meeting started, so I do know you were, you have the ability to do it.
I was on, I don't know, I might share my webcam.
There you are.
Is that working?
Bingo, there you are.
Okay, sorry about that.
Technical difficulties, okay?
Well, thank you, everyone, and good evening. From our team tonight, we have, as they said, Lane Allen from Allen Peppa Architects, who will be here to discuss the building and the landscape architecture. Then we have David Brian Dow, our civil engineer, who will be discussing engineering and answering questions regarding that. Emma's Landing is a proposed 45-unit new construction community consisting of townhomes designed for family households, will be no age restrictions. The development includes 12 townhome pods containing three or four units per building along the cul-de-sac from Lewis Road. There are proposed to be 15 two-bedroom units and 33-bedroom units. Each pod would have a mix of two- and three-bedroom units with garages, rear patios, and front porches, averaging about 1,460 square feet for two-bedroom units and 1,993 square feet for three-bedroom units. This site would also have a playground for children. Five bowling units will be handicapped accessible. Seven two-bedroom units will be handicapped adaptable, and one three-bedroom unit would be for sensory impaired residents. Development amenities, let's have a playground, upgraded landscaping with stormwater, capturing rain gardens, dedicated recycling area, a small office for the property manager, and a storage area for maintenance equipment. Development will have an onsite manager daily in the office, and we'll have routine maintenance there daily. We do also have 24-hour emergency service for residents. We are estimated the development budget to be $18,600,000. And with the approval, if we are granted, we would like to probably start construction early summer 2021 and ending about a year later in summer of 2022. During the construction until the completion of the construction, the general contractor will sweep any dirt that finds its way onto the street. They will monitor that daily. The city requires this, and we do do this on our developments. This building will be built using Enterprise Green Standards, so we will have a certification for a green building as the rest of our buildings do have. The rent for Emma's Landing would average $835 a unit for two-bedroom units and $1,166 for a three-bedroom unit. 18 of the units are set aside for families making up to 80% of the area median income. So, those income ranges for the up to 80% are for families with one to four members in their family household, between $51,000 and $72,000 a year annually. There is no real assistance for this development, so everyone will be paying for their own rent. The typical market rent in the area for a two-bedroom townhome averages about $1,845 a month, and then the three-bedroom townhomes average somewhere around $1,950 a month. So, our rents are less, but we are going up to 80% of the area median income. The tenants, they will pay their heat and electric, and the owners will pay water, sewer, and trash removal. This development was born out of the idea for the employees of Geneva that do work in Geneva and service all the folks who live in Geneva and come to their stores or restaurants, but they can't afford to live in Geneva. So, the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act encourages all cities, towns, and villages to have affordability rental and ownership housing. Geneva is about 7.7%, which is below the minimum 10%. At this time, I'd like to ask Lane Allen to present the overview of the architectural and landscape plans.
Hi, everybody. Lane Allen of Allen and Peppa Architects, 215 Fulton Street, Geneva. Can somebody help me share my screen? Is that just the middle button? Show my screen, okay?
Lane, we just elevated you to a presenter. You should be able to share your screen now.
All right, now, how do I make? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Your screen is.
So, how do I get to my, you know, I've got all these different programs open. How do I get to the screen that I want? Do you see any of my screen?
We see a Google opening page.
Where do I?
So, down in the taskbar at the bottom of the screen, is it a PDF?
Excuse me?
Is your document a PDF?
Yeah.
Click on the Adobe symbol in your taskbar at the bottom of your screen. Nope.
Yeah.
Did that work?
No, do you have two screens?
Yeah.
You have to bring it over to the screen that has the Google webpage up right now.
There you go.
Yep.
Okay, then I'll close that. All right, minimize this, and, okay, I see that. Okay, now, give all my, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, but please speak directly into the mic.
Okay, how's that?
That's good. That's good.
Okay. It's nice to be here tonight, giving this presentation. We've spent a lot of time preparing in all respects, on all levels of detail, and I'll go quickly through my slides to present the project, as well as an overview, the landscape architecture, and the building architecture, and the level of detail that you would presumably need to be reviewing the quality of our work. This is a nice aerial photo that shows it in context, and you can see that there's industrials, and, you know, it just fits very nicely into this spot. We've worked very hard to get these units in here, and I think the density is very appropriate to the project. This is the pro-generator of the design. It's known as Mill Street Station in Oswego, Illinois, and the, you can see the similar details, the landscape architecture, sidewalks, level of paving, the detailing is very similar between the two projects. And in some respects, all the drawings you see tonight are in anticipation of the final project, you know, and that's the way the systems work, that we can get, go through our permit, and both for architecture, landscape, architecture, and civil engineering, and in the end, what we draw is what is built. And so, this kind of, this finished project that illustrates those levels of detail will be reiterated in the drawings that I present. This is a close-up of that aerial that, again, shows it in situ, and I think it shows that it fits very comfortably and is of similar size and scale, if not smaller, than the local buildings in the adjacent properties. Since we presented last time, we've got all of our access points on our own property, all of our detention on our own property, and there's this front buffer along Lewis Road that is owned by the HOA, and we're not using that area, and you'll see from the civil drawings how we coordinate that. The landscape architecture is, has a nice diversity of materials and has a nice diversity. Here's the planting schedule for the deciduous trees and the evergreens, and we've got a very nice playground that is kind of the center core, and you can, actually, there's this little building that I'll get to in a second that is the manager's office, and they can kind of look out and have a second set of eyes on what's going on out there in their public view. To the left of this drawing is that buffer along Lewis Road to get oriented. But the, there's been a lot of discussion between Lanark, Chris Lanark, the landscape architect, and the planning staff on the detailing of this and the number of trees, and, so it's got a nice quality. There'll be, we're not showing the playground apparatuses, but there will be some playground apparatuses. This is a further example of the foundation plantings around each building, and again, if I went back to those photos of Mill Street Station, you would see, you know, the early plantings, and of course, they grew up quickly. And here's the, again, the plantings, in this case, for the four-unit building, and this is per the adherence of the landscape requirements of the project, appropriately so. You know, but, you know, how we walk in, and the entrances are enhanced by the landscaping and gives a sense of place and a sense of residence for these homeowners. We want them to feel that they have a very clear understanding of their property, and we give them the amenities they need to enjoy that property. This is our simple little manager's residence at the very, near the very entrance of the project, which will help kind of keep an eye on what's going on and help to address concerns of the residents and people driving through the development. We have a little garage here that will allow us to put some of our maintenance equipment in it, but that is not elevated in the front of the building. It's around the corner, as illustrated in these perspectives. We're using the same materials as the rest of the project on this building, and it's got a nice little quality to it that gives this cute little scale to the project that is appropriate. This is, these are the elevations of the four-unit building, and you can see a nice mix of materials that I'll talk about in a minute, and, again, a sense of place. The building on the left, the unit on the left between column lines A and B, is a one-level ranch, and that's our, for all the four-unit buildings, they're effectively our accessible units, and they have, so it's all on one level, no elevator, it's just really nice setup, and kind of a dynamic architecture here to accommodate that. You can also see the change of materials for, you know, the brown, in this case, are shingles. It's all LP Smart side, which I'll talk about when I get there with some materials. So, a nice variety of materials, and, again, you can see at the porches, there's, every column is a little bit different than another, and so we have a nice variety of details. The windows, we've got divided lights above, and that will be all true all the way around the building. Here's the sides, you can see, again, a nice porch detailing, very welcoming, people sitting on the porch and sitting on their rear patios, and the perspectives that illustrate the same. Dividing fences, that's base bid, you know, in it, so there's a level of privacy appropriate to each unit. The LP Smart side is, we pay a little bit more upfront, but we get a 50-year prorated material warranty and a 30-year paint warranty, again, prorated, and we've used this on quite a few projects, and it really works nicely and stands up in all respects to the test of time. The two vertical elements are trim, and then the stone, which is a facing, so typical construction with this stone, and we're using this on a project nearby, and it looks great. We're very happy with it. This illustrates that we have eight different color types that will satisfy monotony parameters, and so there'll be a lot of variety in these units. Here's the ranch on the left, and then simple side-by-side townhomes. Otherwise, this is the first floor. Here's the second floor, so that's why there's a roof on the left. That note on the left suggests that there's kind of a cathedral ceiling, ranch, and similarly, there's a two-story space over on the right here, and you can kind of see, you know, that the porches are a bit recessed, and the porch on the, we made a special effort with the porch on the right so that the building is somewhat sculptural, and it, you know, it's not just one-sided, it's multi-dimensional with the door coming around the side. It means that when they're put on the site, it creates a little bit more contextual relationship with other aspects of the site. Then when we go to our three-unit building, it's an ABA scheme with a tall unit in the middle and the ranches on the side. You know, in this day and age, ranches are a premium, so, you know, from a marketing point of view, we've got a lot to offer. Again, similar detailing in the sides, two ranches with a middle unit, and it, all the numbers in terms of the quantity of our units works out great, and it'd be kind of fun to have the middle unit with good views. Again, similar materials, perspective is what you'd expect, and I Um, uh, two ranches with a middle unit and it, all the numbers in terms of the quantity, quantity of all our units works out great. And um, uh, it'd be kind of fun to have the middle unit with good views. Again, similar materials. Perspective is what you'd expect. And uh, I don't really have anything else, so I look forward to your question.
Okay. Tracy, do you have anything else you're gonna be presenting?
We have the civil engineer on the line. Leave.
Okay, why don't we go through that and then when we conclude that, let's just go open it up for commissioners questions at that point.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can. Are you gonna share anything?
Yes, I'm gonna share my screen. My name is Dave Riando and I'm with Civil and Environmental Consultants. And I'm going to try what Lane just did. On my screen, do you guys see the plan?
Yep.
Oh, perfect. Our part's over. So the uh, I'll just go over, you know, this is the preliminary engineering plan. So we'll just go over the water service, the sanitary service and then the site grading with stormwater control. So the water is pretty, pretty simple. We're hooking to the existing water mains on Lewis Road and we're going to loop it through the site. And then the sanitary is also going to start up here at the end of the cul de sac, run down the side of the cul de sac and going to the existing sanitary. Something happened here, one second. You can still see my screen?
Yes, we can, we can see your screen. If you could make it a little bit larger, if you could take your, your left hand side like thumbnails out, so it just becomes a full screen, if you could, or it'd be nice if it'd be a little bit larger.
Possibly there?
Yeah, that's, well, yeah. Yeah, I guess that's a good scale and then you just have to pan around when you're gonna show us some things, just so it's a little more visible.
Okay, perfect. So let's start out on Lewis Road. Now, the Lewis Road is lower, quite a bit lower than the development. The ele, the, there's an eight foot elevation difference. So when you're driving on Lewis Road, you'll, if you look up to the north, you would, you'd actually quite a bit of it is blocked just because of the elevation change. But when you come in the entrance, you're going to uh, climb up at a 6% slope. And then once you hit the top of the entrance, that's the drainage break. It's the existing drainage break and the proposed drainage break. Right now, the site all drains to the west, down into the existing pond down there at the, on the west side. Uh, so we are doing the same drainage pattern, but what we're gonna do is we are going to hold it in, in the, uh, this pond along the west boundary. Now, this pond will be higher in elevation, so the bottom of this pond will be higher than the existing pond. So the water, it'll be three and a half feet deep at the hundred year storm. We'll hold that water and then release it through a seven inch restrictor. Right now, all the water, seven acres is draining right from the pond on the west. We're gonna hold it, control it and then release it at a much slower rate. Um. That's the hundred year storm design. Um, now the uh, BMP, which is a uh, according to the ordinance, you know, Kane County and Geneva, a stormwater ordering. I have to hold some underground infiltration to help for water quality. Um, because right now it's an open field and we're paving over it. Of course, there's gonna be a lot more runoff, less infiltration into the ground. So this, this underground infiltration trench is to mitigate that change. So the idea is the overall change to the site is uh, is that there's gonna be the same amount of infiltration in the site as the pre-existing conditions. Um, I worked real closely with the city stormwater engineer to make sure that we were meeting both the city and the county stormwater management ordinance. Um, that, that's really all I have until questions.
Okay, Tracy, is there anything else you wanna add at this point or any?
I just want you to know that I believe that this building and this development will be something that you will be proud of aesthetically. And also to let you know, our management company is very strict. Uh, they have zero tolerance, like I've said before. Their lease and the addendums and the riders that the tenants have to sign, uh, they sign on for a lot to live here. So it's, we understand quiet enjoyment within an apartment building or within townhomes or homes. Everyone has the right to quiet enjoyment and that's what we expect in our townhomes.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so at this time, I'll open it up for commissioners. Any comments, questions? Commissioner Mead.
Commissioner Mead, thank you Scott, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions or comments and then I'd like to reserve the right to come back after the public has made some comments as well. Um, Tracy, just a general question for you. The um, management staff, um, you're building a nice office uh, with, with proximate to the playground. And it looks like it's uh, built for it to be used. Is it, is it a five day a week staff? Is it a full day shift or is it seven days a week or some Saturday hours? Can you maybe explain how, how often a, a management person is actually onsite?
Guard offices, they vary per building. They're either 8:30 to 4:30 or nine to five. And our goal is to hire someone that is going to live with us, who has this experience to live onsite. That's where I'm going with this.
All right, that's, that's, that's good to know. Um, so it'll be an onsite, it'll be a resident and this will be their, um, this will be part, this will be their job essentially.
Yes, this will be their job. They will pay rent just like everyone else, but they'll get a paycheck for managing the building.
Okay, okay. Um. I assume that the handicap units you talk about are the ranch units? Because it would be difficult to construct a residential unit, handicap accessible without an elevator and additional costs, okay? Um. The project you mentioned, Mill Street Station, which is kind of the, you know, the genesis for this type of design in Oswego. Is that uh, an execution similar to what you're doing here? Where you owned it, designed it, built it and continue to own it?
Lane is actually the architect for that development. And the Burton Foundation does not own that development. However, I'm friends with the developer. I know them.
Okay. Okay. Um. Let's see. Eight and seven, I think it's 20, 17 of the units will be at the 80%. Uh. Or 18 of the units will be at 80% of AMI. And then the balance will be at 60%.
So, yeah. You have to be. You have to be at or below.
Crafted. At or, at or below, correct. So those are the ceilings, right? But they'll be, they'll be income qualified, uh, residents pay. Um, and this becomes, this becomes affordable for them to live and work in the town they, they work in. Um. You, you guys had to acquire an adjacent parcel for ingress and egress. We understand that. The um, that, that's probably part of the reason, if not all the reason, that the two variances are needed. Because the road has to be longer because you were not able to, to gain access across the, the 20 foot or whatever buffer along Lewis. Uh, as well as um, right, so both that, both, both the variances are driven by that back. So I think those are, there's a reason you're asking for those, that relief on those variances. Um. Question for staff. Um. When, when did we last change the multipliers for the park district and school district land cash formula?
Um, those were updated, I believe it was January or February of 2018. So about two years ago.
Okay. Okay, I remember talking about that and I just don't recall and I, and I, and I think that's good. So these are relatively current still.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have for now. I'll come back with additional comments after the public speaks.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans. You have to unmute there. M, you have to unmute.
There, there we go.
There you go.
Okay.
Gotcha.
That's better?
It's good, I can hear you.
Okay, this is Commissioner Evans, I have just a few questions now. Um, one question on the units that are accessible. Do they have to be occupied by people that require accessibility or are they open to anybody who meets the income requirements?
I can answer that if you want.
Okay.
Um, I didn't know if you could hear me, I'm sorry. The, as we lease up, we lease those units last because we are trying to identify folks who might have the need for that apartment. And so those are kind of leased at the last, if there's any units available toward the end of lease up. And then what we do is we actually will lease it if there's no one um, on the list for that unit. But when a, a unit becomes available, it, it is leased to someone that is in, that has that need. Sometimes um, if that unit is the only one that was available and the person moves in, when another townhome unit could become available, we would offer that to the resident in those coach houses, I'm calling them, those single stories to move into the townhome, then we could move in the resident with the need.
Thank you. Then, do the units have to remain affordable in perpetuity? And do you, I assume the rents would be adjusted annually or how often based as, as AMI changes?
Exactly. So what ends up happening is rents are set, AMI is put out obviously on an annual basis. So that's what we calculate, the 60% or 80% by going annually, it usually increases a little bit. And so what we end up doing is usually 20 to $25 is our annual um, CPI factor. It's usually like 2% or less. So 20 to $25 normally, if we, we're not at the maximums right now. But as we will go into next year and we start leasing, the rents will go up just because the, the AMI factor went up.
Okay. And then one other question, the playground, will that be open to the public or that, will that be limited to residents?
That's limited to residents.
Okay. That's all I have right now, thank you.
All right, thank you ma'am. Anyone else at this point? Yes, Commissioner Olman. Rebecca?
Yep. Uh, I have a question for the, um, maybe for the landscape architect. Um, the area that you were talking about, that's between uh, Lewis and it's sort of that open area where I guess the elevation goes up. Um, that's not being used um, on the, I guess, the south side of the property. Does that make sense? Um, I was just wondering if there was gonna be any other landscaping there um, that would, you know, maybe sort of act as a barrier. It's just, was there any future plan for that? Um, it seems like that would be a nice place to put some nice trees and um, things like that. And I don't see anything in that big area there, where, by the access road, between the access road and Lewis.
Uh, that's owned by the HOA. We, we, we don't own that parcel. So we aren't doing anything in that parcel. But it, as the civil engineer noted, it's effectively, as you go over there, it's, it rises very quickly to approximately eight feet above the road. So it's action, there are some trees on it, very few, but enough that added, add a nice quality to it. And it does buffer, create a, you know, it's 100 and, uh, David, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, the depth of it is substantial. And uh, so it, it is acting as a buffer in of its own right. And if they wanna add more landscaping, they can, but it's outside of our scope. You know, we tried to uh, offer to work with it and, and you know, as a win-win relationship. But they requested that we not touch it and so we're not. Tracy, did you wanna add anything?
As far as the developments that we do have now, the developments that we have now, we actually, on an annual basis, we do a needs assessment. And we actually will add um, small bushes, rose bushes. We always ask the cities, can we do this? And as we go along, we can add arbor vine or whatever, we just have to get the approval of the city.
Okay.
The other thing to note is we do have trees along that edge. We do have a fire lane along that edge. So there, you know, there, we're very cognizant of, of what's going on with that edge. And um, if we went back to the landscape plan, we'd, you know, have some sense of that, so.
Okay. That's my only question.
Uh, I'm looking at the landscape plan now. There are four trees up to the, um, I think there's a, a lot of, a lot of nice edging along that in lots of different ways. Whether it's uh, and so I think there's a nice variety of things going on that will feel like a buffer, even though we're not planting on that site.
Yeah, I see the trees, um, so right where that fire access uh, road is, I don't see any trees along that line, but that's because it's right up against the, um, the property line, is that?
Yeah, but right behind it is the playground and, and the, um, and we're taking, you know, think of it this way. That, that fire lane is an amenity for people to, to have a nice little walk around the site. So it's not just an ordinary fire lane, it's gonna be a nice amenity in and of itself.
Okay. And the sidewalks will be right on Lewis Road. Will stay right on Lewis. The existing sidewalk, we'll stay there.
We're not making any change to that. Uh. Within the design. Except for the road condition that we got. It's not shown on our drawings, but it's, it's, we're not touching it.
Okay.
Dave, did you wanna say anything about that?
Does it look like?
Yeah, that's correct, we're, we're not doing anything, you know, of course, we're connecting to the, to the sidewalk, but we're not doing anything with the sidewalk along Lewis Road.
Okay, anything else Rebecca?
No.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Rittenhouse.
Hi, Commissioner Rittenhouse, I have a question for Tracy. Tracy, um, the Burton Group purchased the property um, from the city. And you guys will build and manage? For the foreseeable future?
Well, we will definitely build, will build it and own it. Um, we will own it for as long as I'm here. I, you know, we don't normally sell properties unless they are really old or we're a minority owner and the majority owner decides to own the development, we don't have a choice. The ones that we develop, we keep. And we, we third party manage, we don't self-manage.
Okay, all right. Um. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, John. Yes, Commissioner Sifka.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Um, okay, just a few unrelated questions. Regarding the uh, the stormwater, um, so it's my understanding that the detention pond will hold all the stormwater from this development. Uh, I noticed there was a note on the drawing though, that, that says that there's an area that does not drain uh, to the, to the, to uh, the detention pond in the southwest corner.
Yeah, yes, that is correct, there's a small area, um, you know, as I'm, as you're going, when you go up the entrance. Yes, that is correct. There's a small area, you know, as you're going, when you go up the entrance, you're going up the hills. So of course, there's going to be a small, very small area, 5% maybe, that I just can't get to drain up the hill and then down the hill. But I am going to oversize the storm sewer that I am putting in a couple inlets right at the entrance. And I'm going to make that pipe much larger to carry the 100-year storm. So I'm going to catch 95%. Some of it that flows through the southeast, very small amount, I just physically can't get it.
In the detention area, where you have some underground detention, is, there's also a note, I think about the possibility of being a rain garden? And is that different from what's currently planned?
We originally had a rain garden in there. And the maintenance involved in rain garden is extremely difficult, to say the least. I think one of the comments, early comments from the city was for me to look into other options where there would be a little bit less maintenance. So I decided to go ahead and put the infiltration requirement underground. I think it's going to be a lot easier to, well, it'll be much easier to maintain. You don't really have to do anything with it. So that's why we decided to go that route.
And actually, that's why I asked, because I know the rain gardens can be, can be difficult to maintain, so.
I could reply to that a little bit too. In the foundation plantings, we'll take advantage of the plantings around the building and have some of the downspouts go into the landscaping to help, you know, keep the landscaping hydrated. And so the architecture and landscape architecture will work together to try to take advantage of the water coming off the roofs. In typical rain garden mode.
Okay, I did have a question about the buildings. So what you've shown, the two buildings, that will be essentially what will be built. So the buildings will not all look the same, there will be some difference in mass and elevation. So the differences won't just be colors.
If you look at the site plan, you'll see that they, you know, that there's three three-unit buildings to help you focus on the site plan. And they're interspersed amongst the buildings. There's one in the upper right corner, there's one, you can count the driveways to kind of see where they are. And so there's kind of a dancing along, if you will, of the landscape of the buildings in terms of their size and scale, as well as changing materials. So we do in fact have, I think it's 12 four-unit buildings and three three-unit buildings, and they're all interspersed in different colors. And we, you know, and we took our color scheme, we went A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D, A, B, C, D. So it will be in terms of those color schemes, and there's eight different color schemes. So I think there'll be a nice variety.
And I just had a question on the construction timing. You said this would take about a year. So is it, is it all built and then it starts to be occupied? Or is it occupied, you know, the units that are built first occupied and then in sequence?
So the way that I do my lease up is when we're about 75% done with construction, I actually have a kickoff meeting in the community and everybody will come. They'll see the plans and they actually can pick the room that they like. And they can take whichever view they want. So we actually kind of pre-lease. Because when it's leased, when it's ready to occupy, I like to lease the building quickly. Everybody's there, everyone's paying attention to what's going on. So it just, it's better if you could just lease it up quickly.
In other words, if one building is completed, you don't move in, you wait. Can you explain how you would do this relative to all 15 units?
So during construction, they're going to have concrete on site, so all the foundations will be poured. So all the buildings will be similar completion. So by the time I'm starting to lease, all the buildings should be pretty much in line with each other. The roofer's going to be there at the same time, the framers will be there at the same time. So the buildings will be getting built close in proximity of timing. So as units become available, we can lease them, but I tend to lease them up quickly in a couple of months. We normally fill up the buildings.
Thank you.
But, but more, most definitively, we can occupy an individual unit unless, for instance, all four units are completely approved and pass inspection for occupancy. You know, that's a given. But also, we recognize that there are safety issues that are called with that condition for people and contractors to be interspersed. So it's not in anybody's best interest to occupy things prematurely. It just makes it harder for everybody.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Anyone else at this point? Yes, Commissioner Hollman.
Okay, this is more in relation to parking. I was wondering if on Emma's Way, is there any on-street parking? I see all the other parking, but are there signs that say no parking? Is it, like, how is that sort of regulated with? Because I see, is it 15 spots that are not, that are available other than the driveways? Is that correct? And then is there any other options for parking within the, in the beginning? I don't see any spots. I'm low.
Dave, can you talk about the width of the road?
Yeah, I'll talk about that. So the width of the road is 30 feet back to back. And you can, the parking spaces, so in front of the office, there'll be three. Those would be off-street. I assumed there was no on-street parking. I thought that I, public works, I thought they had me put a sign. I'm looking through my plans right now.
We have like four no-parking sites on the right side of the road. For fire lane issues as required by the city. And then the other spaces that you're trying to refer to are interspersed in between the trees of the landscape plan that I'm looking at. So 3, 6, 9, 12. Some of those could be four, so.
Mr. Chairman.
David, David de Groot, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was just going to add that the city requested that parking be restricted on one side of the street. So there's on-street parking in addition to those additional spaces that Commissioner Holloman pointed out.
Okay, so there is.
The other thing to note is that we've got, I think, 20 feet from the face of the building to the sidewalk. So you could get a car in there and no, no cars are sitting over the sidewalk, which we have on both sides.
Okay. Okay, and is there a restriction for residents to only have a certain number of cars? If it's, you know, two adults and they have a 17-year-old child, so there might be the potential for a three-car. Is there any restriction as far as the lease goes or anything like that? They just need double?
Yeah, no, you know, they have the double garages and then they have the driveway. And we, you know, we have a family development here in South Elgin. And there's maybe three families that have two cars. So in Geneva, they may have two cars. But I can't restrict how many cars someone can have in this development, just like we can't in any development. So I, I think I'd get in trouble for that.
No, I wouldn't expect you to, I was just curious if there's about number of vehicles or anything like that, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you Rebecca. Anybody else on the commission would like to speak? Yes, Commissioner Mead.
Just to follow on to Rebecca's question about the parking. I would imagine, Tracy, that although you can't correct how many cars someone has, I know of developments that require that a car not be parked and stationary for longer than a whatever number of days. So someone couldn't park in a spot and leave a car for 30 days, but they'd have to move the car every, it can't be parked no longer than 48 hours or something in a spot before it has to move, so.
You know?
It helps.
And it's very true, we do do that. So as far as parking, you're not even allowed to change your oil in your driveway. They're not allowed to do any work on their cars in our buildings. Once, here in South Elgin, we had to tell one person. And then a guy in Gurnee had a limo that had a flat tire we had to tow. So no, we don't, we don't allow people to work on their cars and we don't allow even a car to be flat. They will get a notice.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this point? Yes, Adam.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Matteske, I've just got a few questions for Tracy. Tracy, historically on some of your prior developments, what kind of annual turnover are you looking at as a percentage of the development?
Annual turnover?
Yeah.
You know, it's rare that people move out, actually. It's very low.
What's, as far as on average, the amount of years they tend to stay with?
We'll just talk about the family development here in South Elgin. It's been up and going in six years. There might have been 10 or 11 people that have moved.
And how many units are in that development?
50, there's 50.
Okay, and maybe I misunderstood what you mentioned earlier. Did you say that you guys do not self-manage?
We do not self-manage, we third-party manage.
And who is your property management group?
Vantage Property Management, and they manage the two buildings here in South Elgin and the one in Gurnee.
Okay, so they have, they have obviously history in managing this type of asset.
And they're of zero tolerance like I am.
That's, that's all I've got, thank you.
All right, thank you, Adam. Anyone else at this point? Okay, I guess we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Again, as you're called to speak, if you want to speak, use the raise hand feature on the go-to meeting. And we will acknowledge you. When you are asked to speak, please state your name and address prior to speaking. And just give a little time after you unmute your mic to, before you start speaking, because there will be a slight delay.
Okay, the commission now recognizes Marissa Jennings. Please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony. Marissa Jennings?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. My name is Marissa Jenikus and I currently reside on Caldwell Lane in the Sterling Manor subdivision. I spoke at the July committee of the whole meeting and I'd like to reiterate my concerns that I had presented at that time. When I first heard about the development known as Emma's Landing, I'll be the first to admit that I was for this project. Over the past 25 years, I've had my fair share of financial difficulty. I've lived in my car, I've lived in many substandard unsafe one-bedroom apartments where I could barely afford to pay rent. There were times when I could barely afford to pay for food. So yes, I understand the need for affordable housing and fully understand that a safe place to live can help people get back on their feet. However, as I began to educate myself on the Burton Foundation proposal, I realized that although this development would provide a safe place to live and quality schools for the people living there, it by no means will integrate these new residents into our community. The parcel of land that we are discussing at tonight's public hearing is landlocked, surrounded by a retention pond that constantly floods, Union Pacific Railroad tracks and a vacant plastics factory. There will be a single entry point with a thousand-foot road, basically making this development a standalone community. The current renderings have the backs of the units facing Lewis Road. There is no walkability to an affordable grocery store or public transportation in the area that will, area to take those who don't have cars to their jobs. And we know that Uber is not a viable option for the tenants. Aside from these new residents potentially working in the community and the children attending Geneva schools, how are they truly being integrated with their neighbors? I do think the Lewis Road property could be used for affordable housing, but why not make it half the size to address the concerns residents have brought to your attention? Why not make the townhomes mixed-income units so it's not known as that affordable housing section in Geneva? Why not turn the units so that they are facing Lewis Road so new residents can feel like they are part of the community? Affordable housing in Geneva shouldn't be just about checking a box to say that you have accomplished the state mandates. It should be about setting individuals up for success through true integration within the community. Tonight, I encourage you to take my comments into consideration before moving Emma's Landing forward so that we can come together to develop a viable plan to bring successful affordable housing to Geneva that will in fact set our residents up for success. Thank you.
Thank you.
The commission now recognizes Rodney Nelson. Please unmute yourself and proceed your testimony.
Hi, my name is Rod Nelson, I live at 23 Kane Street in Geneva. I'd like to just very briefly discuss one issue. And that is the affordability of living in Geneva for the people who are already here. As we facilitate the arrival of new residents, we risk taxing out of Geneva some current residents, particularly those on fixed incomes and those who have been adversely affected by the pandemic. So when you talk about affordability, you talk about taxes. I think most of us know that about 90% of school funds in Geneva come from the local tax base. We get virtually no state aid. 70% of the taxes that each of us as homeowners pay go to Geneva schools. And residences account for about 70% of our tax base. So adding more students obviously increases our total funds. It takes currently about three average homes in Geneva, the taxes from those three homes to fund one student per year. And of course, the cost of educating a student varies from student to student. For example, high school students are obviously much more expensive to educate than elementary. So I looked at two pages of what were called fact sheets by the, distributed by the city of Geneva. One is dated July 10th of last year. And on page four, it says the development is expected to generate approximately 100 students. And that Geneva would get a land cash impact fee to accommodate these, as well as annual property taxes from the new townhomes. New Year's Eve of 2020, 12/31, a very similar page appears as a fact sheet. Only this one says the development is expected to generate approximately 10 students. And then has the rest of the verbiage being the same. I went through the packet that came today, searching for District 304. I found it mentioned two or three times, but never in the context of a discussion of what impact this or three times, but never in the context of a discussion of what impact this would have on the schools and what their estimate would be by their professional staff in terms of how many students it would generate. I know as a former Geneva School Board member that the 100 number was very high. I suspect the 10 number might be a bit low. Another thing that's on that page four is a question about, do affordable housing development pay real estate taxes? And the answer is yes, in both cases. But they don't seem to take into consideration the fact that Illinois has a tax abatement program for affordable housing. It's codified in 35 Illinois compiled statutes, 200, Article 18. And it basically says that in wealthy communities, those being defined as having less than 10% of their population, being at a poverty level, that people in, it's called housing opportunity area abatement, can apply for abatement of their taxes. So I, nowhere do I find in this proposal an estimate of what it's going to cost the taxpayers in terms of assessed valuation increase versus taxes actually paid versus number of students generated. And it would seem to me that, that any reasonable person who is going to purchase something wants to know what the price is going to be. I'm particularly concerned on my side of town, where we have actually quite a bit of diversity of housing, that we will have people who, whose taxes will cause them to have to move elsewhere. So I hope you'll consider these concerns when you move forward. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
The commission now recognizes Edward Manning. Please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, I'm speaking for my wife and myself. We live at 2647 Cedar Avenue in the Sterling Manor subdivision. I wish you all a good evening tonight, and thank you for taking the time to hear our comments. We, as a family, will greatly plead that the Geneva City Council has withheld the lands from the Burton Foundation for the development of Emma's Landing. We live only a few blocks from that site, and welcome new residents to benefit from affordable housing. We believe this will make Geneva a more inclusive and welcoming community. We have listened, as many of our neighbors, brought up reasons not to build Emma's Landing under Lewis Road's site. We feel that although the concerns raised by many are legitimate, there is not a one that isn't manageable. We believe the issues that have been raised can and have been successfully addressed in the development plan. We both know the devil is in the details, and we are hopeful that the application request discussed at tonight's meeting can be agreed upon, and continue to move forward towards development. As Geneva resident since 1987, and of Sterling Manor since 2001, we thank you for your efforts to make Geneva a stronger, more inclusive community. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
The commission now recognizes Martin Otto Minelli. Please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Yes, good evening. This is Martin Otto Minelli. I'm a resident on Patton Avenue in the Sterling Manor development. Hey, since tonight, not really in the form of commentary, I have questions that I would like to direct to Ms. Manning and some of the commissioners. I don't know if we're in that part of the meeting or not. So is it appropriate to ask questions at this point, or is this only for commentary?
You can ask your questions, questions to the commissioner, to me, questions to Tracy. She'll answer them when we open up the portion of the meeting where she can answer whatever questions come out of the testimony. So yeah, you can definitely submit them at this time.
Okay, so then, here goes. The original plan identified as the general contractor, Door Creek Construction of Illinois. I've tried to do a Google search on them to determine their experience with this product type, this type of project, and their experience within the area. That didn't yield any meaningful information. I tried to reach out and correspond with them directly, and they did not respond to any of my emails. So my question is, why did Burton Foundation select Door Creek Construction of Illinois as the general contractor? What is, and what is their experience with this general contractor, and what is the experience of the general contractor with this type of project?
Okay, and your next question, please?
My next question has to do with commentary made by Ms. Manning earlier this evening, also Commissioner Mead, and other commentary during the July meeting that we had on Emma's Landing, and that has to do with the statements that this would be an opportunity for local workers and residents living within the community to, to have a place within Geneva that's affordable where they could stay in the area. I think that's highly desirable. But I wonder, based on other questions I've asked throughout this process about how applicants would be selected, whether that's realistic. It's my understanding that applications will be selected on a first-come, first-served basis as they are time-stamped and received. And in fact, there is no way to determine whether local workers or local residents would be selected, whether there's any way to skew residency that way. These applications could be coming from out of the area, in fact, possibly out of state. So I would like clarification on how do we achieve this wonderful concept of having people who are local to the community actually living at Emma's Landing? My second, my third question is really along the lines of what was previously mentioned by another caller, which was with 15 two-bedroom units and 33-bedroom units, to anticipate a 10 students and a payment of $66,000 cash to the, to the city for that? It seems low, so I'd like to better understand how the multiplier is determined, and whether this is a realistic impact to our schools to expect only 10 students. And then, sorry, I don't know if I'm asking too many questions or not, but I've only got a couple more if you could bear with me.
No, that's fine. That's what this is for. I want you to ask any questions you want to ask.
Okay. The, I'm, I'm, I'm a little challenged when it comes to things like looking at drawings and reading blueprints and things like that, so I'm going to rely on the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission for, for that. My question is, one of the variances is, is related to the intersecting right of ways from the required minimum of 125 feet to 25 feet. That, on the surface, seems like a material difference. And I'm assuming the current minimum requirement of 125 feet is there for a reason. So if, if someone who understands this better than I do can explain to me exactly how that variance would impact and what the, perhaps objectively explain what the, what the pluses and minuses would be of doing that, I would appreciate that, so that I could understand whether we're really creating a problem here. And I think, I thank you. Those are, those are all of my questions. Oh, I'm sorry. I lied. One more.
I thought you had one more.
I've heard, I need clarification with regard to the, to the onsite manager, and I just need to get this straight. I've heard there will be an office there that will maintain business hours, let's call it, more or less, where someone will be onsite, and there's an expectation. I don't know if it'll be a commitment by the part of Burton or, or a goal, that the manager will be residing at the property. Does that mean that that manager is effectively available 24 hours to the residents if anything's going on at the property, or is it just that because they're, the manager, they're getting a break on the residents, but they're really not available after normal business hours? And if you could please clarify that, I would appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much for your questions.
Do we want to move on to?
Move on to the next one.
Also, I want to remind members of the public who wish to speak to first state their name and address before giving their testimony. The commission now recognizes Emily Erickson. Please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony. Emily Erickson? We see you have your hand up. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yeah, so hang on. I'm having a difficult time here.
We can hear you.
Okay.
We can hear you.
Oh, yeah. Okay, wonderful. Sorry, my kids are in the background, so it might be a little loud. But I actually am going to echo one of the questions that was just asked about the screening of the applicants. You know, you stated that the project was born, you know, from the issue that many Geneva workers can't afford to live here. So does that mean, I guess my question would mean that, would be that, does that mean you have to be employed by a Geneva business in order to apply to be a resident here? And I assume since you can't answer that question now, I'll, I'll make the assumption that the answer is yes, that you do have to be part of the Geneva community, because that's kind of how you defined it. And I don't understand, then, if that's not the case, why you would open up your presentation with the grandiose claim that the purpose is for the community, because then that would be deceptive. And if you're already spreading disinformation at the birth of this project, how are we supposed to believe anything you say about the life of the project? So that's kind of my first question. I also want to know that, well, I guess if you do have to be a Geneva resident, or not resident, employee, or I don't know how you're defining it, but what if that person's situation changes? Do then they lose their lease? And then also, what happens if a family's income, you know, when they apply, they fall within the median requirements, but then they start making more? Does that mean that that disqualifies them from living at the property, and do then they lose their lease? And how do you go about that? Let's see, what was, also, you were talking about the goal of having someone live on the site, that would be 24-hour management, if that's correct? You said that that's a goal. Do we have that, or can we have that in writing, that you're actually going to do that? And if you can't fulfill that right away, will you hire somebody, you know, temporarily to do a 24-hour, you know, be 24-hour staff? And what is it that you do at your other Burton Foundation properties? I also gathered, and I could be mistaken about this, but you said that there's no guarantee that handicapped units will be filled with handicapped individuals. And if those units are filled from other applicants that are not handicapped, what happens if you have a handicapped individual that then applies? Do you have to move the non-handicapped resident out of that unit, or does the handicapped applicant get moved to the front of the line since, you know, you don't have any other handicapped residents currently in there? And then my third concern is, I was just wondering about the pair of Sand Hill cranes that nest there every year. And I guess I'm also concerned about the density as well. So that's all I have for now.
All right. Thank you.
The commission now recognizes Chuck Miles. Chuck, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Yeah, this is Chuck Miles, 1015 Westfield Court. Assume you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
In Geneva. I want to thank all the commissioners. Welcome, Adam. I think you're a new one. I spoke several times at the Plan Commission about affordable housing and worked with the commission to make the changes about a year ago. That led to the ability for Geneva to actually finally add to affordable housing. So I want to thank the Plan Commission and commissioners for all your volunteer work on this. I know it's hard work. I also wanted to thank Dave DeGroot and his staff for all the great work they've done in developing this property. I know it's been active with the city for about a year or longer, and a lot of great work has gone into it. I was able to review briefly the comments that did come in to the commission. A lot of positive comments, and I want to thank everybody who does that. And then there were also obviously some, some negative comments, and I just wanted to very quickly talk about those. They primarily were around density, traffic, and flooding. The density, the, you will, if you lead the narrative from the staff, the city or the development meets the Sterling Manor PUD requirements with 45 units. Traffic has been addressed in a traffic study that's been reviewed by an outside consultant, as well as the city, and found no traffic problems. And you've also heard a lot about flooding and a lot of pictures of flooding. Interestingly, the Lewis flooded, the flooding on Lewis was actually caused by some blockage of outlet pipes, and that is owned by the HOA. So hopefully that will be resolved. And I believe the city is addressing some of the Fargo issues with the stormwater study that was being done. Finally, running Geneva for 30 years, I worked with the Burton Foundation for at least eight years on two developments as part of my role of being on the board of the Association for Individual Development, Waters Edge and Marison Mills in South Elgin. And I've been in those properties, and I've also been in the Windmill Manor property on Batavia. And I could tell you, they're all very well-maintained, very well-managed. Some of you know me better than others, but having lived here for 30 years, raising my family here, if this was not an outstanding property for the City of Geneva, I would not be recommending it. And I wholeheartedly recommend this, and urge the council, urge, urge the Plan Commission to approve tonight as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
The commission now recognizes Lindsey McCall. Lindsey, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lindsey McCall, and I'm located at 2732 Peterson Court. I have attended and recently re-watched the March 12 PZC meeting and the Committee of the Whole meeting on July 12. And after listening to tonight's presentation from the Burton Foundation regarding the most recent renderings, I'm going to be honest. I'm still left a little disheartened by the fact that the Burton Foundation and City of Geneva have not provided the residents of Sterling Manor with responses to the questions we've been asking for nearly a year. None of the feedback we had given at the initial planning and zoning meeting and special city council meeting have been implemented in these new renderings. The only thing that seems to have changed is a single entry point, rather than the Crescent Drive they had initially proposed. When we tried to bring up our concerns at the Committee of the Whole meeting, they were deemed to be not germane. We were cut short. We were told that our questions pertaining to the land use needed to be discussed at the planning and zoning public hearing. However, those who spoke in favor of the Burton Foundation proposal were able to use the podium, speak their mind, and were never silenced. So I ask that tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission hear us out and truly listen to our concerns before making a final decision. I'd like to speak on behalf of many of the residents of Sterling Manor when we say we are not against inclusionary housing in our neighborhood. By the way, many of these residents I've been receiving text messages from are still unable to access this meeting right now. I have at least eight members of our community that have sent me messages of frustration, saying that they are unable to contact, or excuse me, to connect to this meeting. But back to my point, as mentioned, we're not against inclusionary housing. We know it's part of our 2025 strategic plan, and that the City of Geneva significantly lacks affordable housing options. But what we are against is the lack of transparency from the Burton Foundation and the City of Geneva. When meetings with the Town Home Association were scheduled last year, the Burton Foundation was a no-show on both occasions. So they're not hearing our voices. The only time they hear our voices are in these meetings, when most of the time, we end up being silenced. So once again, I'm going to ask, for the third time, the following questions to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the Burton Foundation. As a courtesy to the residents who will be impacted by this sizable, sizable development, I'm encouraging the Planning and Zoning Commission to postpone their decision on approving plans for Emma's Landing until we receive answers to our questions, and we can meet again in person, where everyone's voice can be heard. First and foremost, many residents are First and foremost, many residents are concerned about the density of the proposed development, or concerned about the increase in speeding traffic. So my question to the commission is, the traffic study provided by the Burton Foundation uses data from June of 2018. Therefore, school was not in session, and it also doesn't take into consideration that the speed limit on Kaneville was just reduced by 10 miles an hour due to the speeding traffic and accidents. To the commission, can you please provide us with the results of how many speeding cars have gone down Lewis Road based on the data received from the digital speed recorders that have been prominent over the past few months? If you cannot provide us with this data at this time, I encourage you to postpone your decision this evening. We are also concerned about the removal of soil and how the addition of significant amount of cement will affect an area already prone to flooding. The Burton Foundation does not have access to the Sterling Manor Homeowners Association retention pond as they had initially inferred in the March meeting, and have therefore proposed a small detention pond in these updated renderings. I had submitted photos via the public comment email to support my following questions. So to the commission, the city of Geneva is currently undertaking a comprehensive watershed study through WBK Engineering, wherein the Sterling Manor subdivision has some of the highest instances in reports of flooding and damage to homes. We've only completed Phase 1 of this study. In Phase 3 of the program, referred to as the Plan Development and Priorities, is not estimated to be completed until June of 2021. Can the commission please tell me if you are familiar with this study? If you have looked at and assessed the interactive map and read the problems residents have with flooding in the area? If you attended the Public Works meeting on October 1st, as many of the residents of Sterling Manor did? And if you plan on taking this taxpayer-funded, comprehensive study into consideration before you approve a development that will have a huge impact on the stormwater detention in the area? If your answer is no to any of these questions, I encourage you to postpone your decision this evening. Regarding the density of Emma's Landing, many residents, myself included, believe that if the development is simply scaled down, many of our concerns will be addressed. Rather than 45 townhomes, we have suggested 25 to 30 to help minimize the traffic and the carbon footprint. My question to the commission is, are you familiar with a 2013 Lighthouse Company's geotechnical study that was completed for a comparable development for Shodin that consisted of 50 units, concrete sidewalks, and concrete access lots? In that study, the soil was deemed to be substandard and could not support structures over 2,000 pounds. The results proved that the development was too dense for the property, and Shodin was unable to develop that land. If you are unfamiliar with this study and the development that was proposed in 2013, I encourage you to postpone your decision this evening. My question for Ms. Manning and the Burton Foundation. On December 28th of 2020, Earth Solutions conducted a geotechnical study on the proposed parcel of land. I confirmed with David DeGroot that this study was not funded by the city of Geneva, but by the Burton Foundation. Ms. Manning, can you please share the results of the study with the commission? Are they the same results that we encountered in 2013? If they are the same, can you please tell us how you will address the problem when the proposed units for Emma's Landing don't have basements to support the structures that you have in the renderings? If the results are different, can you please explain the discrepancies to the commission? If you are unable to provide the data at this time, I encourage the commission to postpone their decision this evening. I swear, I'm almost done, guys. My next concern is the existing layout of the proposed townhomes. At the March 12th meeting, former Commissioner and now second ward alderman, Casarag, asked at the Burton Foundation if they had explored turning the townhomes so that the backs are not facing Lewis Road, since people tend to collect things in their yards. Ms. Manning stated at that time and this evening that they are third-party property-managed, they have a long and lengthy lease, they have many riders that go along with the lease, and every resident who lives there have to sign all riders. She stated that they have zero tolerance in their buildings, as she does tonight, and if someone does not follow the rules of the lease or any riders, they lose their apartment. So my question to the Burton Foundation, can you please provide us with an example lease and list of riders that property managers enforce? Do you fully trust that property managers are enforcing these riders? I ask because we have visited other properties, such as the one in Sterling, Illinois, and we have seen bikes left outside, overgrown playgrounds. We have FOIA'd law enforcement agencies at every one of your Burton Foundation properties, and we've seen the types of complaints that occur at these properties. Yet you mentioned you have had only one instance where a visitor was out of compliance and lost their home. I am not sharing these FOIA requests because I don't feel that everyone needs to know what goes on in people's lives, but I do not for one minute think that your third-party property managers are fully enforcing the riders that you say that they are. So riders aren't going to be enforced. I do ask that you consider turning the town, that existing residents won't be looking at the backyards, and that new residents of Emma's Landing would have view of the park and open detention space across the street, rather than looking at concrete. One other question that I came up as I'm listening this evening, Ms. Manning, is in the March meeting, you stated that 83% of people that live in Geneva come from the community where we live. At the 2 hour and 31-minute mark, you stated that you already had a waitlist of people who currently live in Geneva on the wait. Tonight, you said these are people that work in Geneva but do not live here. Can you please clarify? Do you currently have a waitlist? If not, where are these people coming from? Are they currently residing here, or are they working here and then moving to this community? Who is leasing at these kickoff meetings that you have talked about? Another follow-up question that I had was for the architect, where you said the fire lane is a nice amenity for people to walk around. Well, my understanding is that the only reason this fire lane has been put in place is because it's required due to the 2015 IFC Fire Code and the inability for emergency vehicles to access units due to the single access road. Will there be sprinklers installed in the units, Ms. Manning? Because the last email that I read, you were fighting against this, thinking that the access road would be enough. In conclusion, I'd like to reiterate that we are not against inclusionary housing on Lewis Road. We would simply like to see the development scaled back and changing the layout so that units face Lewis Road. If Burton Foundation is unable to work with us and they're unable to grant us this request, many residents agree that affordable senior housing could greatly benefit the aging population of Geneva and the surrounding areas and help us meet our 2025 strategic plan. An affordable senior housing development would nearly eliminate the concerns we have regarding traffic, and if scaled back to not, and it wouldn't, if scaled back, it would not cover nearly eight acres with buildings and cement, the carbon footprint would drastically decrease. Although Ms. Manning stated at the March 12th meeting that there was not a demand for affordable senior housing in Geneva, I would like to kindly disagree. After making a few quick phone calls to property managers of senior affordable housing in the area, I found out that Anthony Place, the new Shodin construction in St. Charles, is already at 100% capacity with a waitlist of two years. Carroll Tower in St. Charles is at capacity with a multi-year waitlist. Windmill Manor in Batavia is at capacity with an 18- to 24-month waitlist. Riverine Point Apartments in Batavia is at a 100% capacity with a two-to-three-year waitlist. Marison Mill Suites, owned by the Burton Foundation, was the only property that did not return my calls. Once again, I want to thank the commission for hearing our concerns this evening, and I trust that you will encourage the Burton Foundation to implement changes to help address these concerns moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The commission now calls upon Joe Keifer. Go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
I'm sorry. This is Joe. Who did you call on?
You, yes. You may proceed with your testimony.
I thought it might be me. I got the cue to unmute, but I have to be honest with you, sir, I couldn't even understand that you were saying my name.
I apologize.
On that note, I do think it's a little strange that we're doing this via Zoom or whatever the app is. We're doing it virtually. My name's Joe Kiefer. I'm at 1740 Fezit Run Place. The previous caller raises a very good point that I had not been focusing on in this matter, and that is, can we make it senior housing? Because that seems to square away a lot of the issues that are involved. I think that the applicant has obtained tax credits for a certain type of housing that is not senior. Why can't the applicant go back and reapply for senior housing tax credits from the Illinois Housing Development Authority in 2021? Because something tells me that any application with the town name of Geneva on it would probably be approved pretty quickly, given what everybody is saying about how we don't have any affordable housing and we need more of it. So is that a possibility? Especially when it would satisfy quite a lot of folks who see a lot of problems with this, and it would simply solve a lot of the problems that have already been identified. So I would like the commission to consider that, and I would like the applicant to answer that question. I have a few other comments, and then I have several other questions. The other comments that I have are, I would request that the commission change the rules that we're under here and allow the applicant to answer questions direct. Is there somebody who is taking notes as to everybody's questions?
Yes.
And who is going to hold? Okay.
Yes, we're taking notes on the questions. The reason I'm doing that is that there's a, there's a long list of people who want to testify, want to get it all in the record, and then we can systematically go through and answer the questions. So just as a, for method of timing, I think it's going to be better to do it that way, rather than going back and forth, people waiting extra long to answer, you know, have ability to answer a question.
Very good, sir. So long as people get their questions answered, that's paramount.
I'm writing them down.
Great. With our inexperience with affordable housing in Geneva, I feel like we should be cautious going in because of the potential of the dream, so to speak, not being achieved. And I would like to see the commission place some safety measures onto this development as a condition of approval. So I'd like to see that moving forward, some safety measures. In case the dream is not achieved, how can we best position ourselves for this to be a success? And so far, I haven't seen any thought to that. So I'll turn to my questions now, and some of these are pointed. Some of these have already been brought up, but I'm just going to ask them pointedly. How much in taxes will the Burton Foundation be paying per unit to the city of Geneva? Number two, I think what really needs to be clear from the applicant, what the actual renting process is? So I don't know if they'll be soliciting, or what happens when people apply for these units? Who reviews them? What measures do they check? I think that sort. I think that fills some confusion. Does the applicant have to accept a certain amount of Section 8 vouchers? Can the commission make it a condition of approval that there be an onsite manager? As opposed to it being a goal, I request that the commission make it a condition of approval that there be an onsite manager, not a goal. What are the standards for renewing a lease for somebody who rents at Emma's Landing? For instance, once the lease is up, what is the renewal process? Next question, if any of these leases go on indefinite? Are there some leases that do not ever expire? My next question is, and it's been discussed already, our school district resources are impacted by an increase in children attending the schools? The more resources we need to properly educate our children, the more taxes are needed to fund those resources. How do you ensure, how does the applicant ensure that the rules for occupancy are obeyed so that the city citizens of Geneva's axes are not impacted? So how do you enforce your occupancy rules? If the applicant, next question, sorry, I got quite a few. Next question is, if the applicant, if there are any applications received for any particular unit, then who lives there? If this is affordable housing and applicants are targeted in a certain income bracket, if you don't get any applicants in the, say, 60% income bracket, then how are those units filled? Are they from vouchers? Do they remain vacant? What's the, what's there? Are any of the units specifically reserved for supportive housing? Meaning, any of the units must be filled by supportive housing? And if so, how many?
Sir, I don't know what supportive housing is.
Great. Then I have a question for the applicant. Can you please define, commission, what's supportive housing?
Okay. I mean, we'll find out, but that's the first time I've ever heard that term, so.
All right. Well, that's my question for the applicant to answer for the commission. What is supportive housing? And then my question is, are any of the units required to be supportive housing? Two more questions. How is the applicant going to prevent people from using the fire access road as an actual roadway? Are there going to be a gate there, jersey barriers? How's that going to work? And also, the last question is, the applicant has said that they have zero tolerance. And my question is, zero tolerance for what? Certainly, I would imagine if somebody commits a crime on site, you would evict them. But under what, what else do you have zero tolerance for when you say that? And thank you very much to the commission for taking, keeping track of all of my questions. They were almost voluminous, but I appreciate that. I think it's important. And with that, I conclude my questions and comments. Thank you again.
All right. Thank you, sir. The commission now calls upon Lynn Moravec. Lynn, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello.
Hi. We can't hear you. Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Lynn Moravec, and I live at 1021 Lewis Road.
Lynn, before you continue, can you please turn down your volume?
I live at 1021 Lewis Road. In Geneva, just south of Fargo Boulevard. Is that better?
I think it's from your YouTube, perhaps? If you could turn down the YouTube channel you're watching and then proceed with your testimony. Yeah, we're hearing an echo, so it's hard to hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
Is that better?
Oh, that's, yeah, very good.
Much better. Okay. Sorry about that. My name is Lynn Moravec, and I live at 1021 Lewis Road. I live just south of Fargo in the Randall Square subdivision. I am, at this meeting, I've been watching the progression for a long time now. I know many questions have somewhat been answered, but I also believe that many have not. One of my main concerns, I've lived in our home since 2003. I have three children, two that are now done in the school system, one that is now a sophomore at Geneva High School. And I guess one of my main, main concerns is the traffic study that has been done. The traffic study that has been done was done in June. The middle school has a tremendous effect on the amount of traffic in our area. If anybody from this area knows, you don't go down Randall, or Fargo leading to Randall at about 3:40 in the afternoon. When I leave my subdivision... When I leave my subdivision, it could take me, and I'm not even exaggerating, it could take me 25 minutes to get past the fire department, to cross over where Michaels is at the stop sign, to turn left onto Randall Road. Having a traffic study done in June, it makes me think, wow, that was really, that was really silly to do it at that time. What are we trying to avoid here? Some real numbers? Um, I, I just, with, with 70, 72 units, I believe, with 72 units with possibly two cars per family, that's, you know, 144 extra cars on the road that could be leaving or coming or going to work if they work a night shift or, you know, it's, it's added, it's added stress to our roads, let alone just recently the speed limit, before this development has even gone in, the speed limit has been reduced on Kaneville and, and Lewis right there, showing that there's already a problem. The intersection of Fargo and Randall Road, I cannot even tell you, I live so close, I'm two houses in, at Fargo and Lewis, that I can hear the sirens. I know when there's an accident at Randall and Lewis and it's, it's bone chilling because it happens, I'm sorry, Randall at Fargo, it's bone chilling because it happens all the time. That intersection is just as bad as the intersection of Randall and Kaneville, um, which is frightening. So I guess my question is, to not have an actual true study of what the traffic impact is, is very concerning. Um, one other question, um, oh, oh, speaking of the traffic, my concern of that is, when people, if this subdivision does go through, what's going to happen, these are my fears, what is going to happen is people are going, going to eliminate coming down Fargo to get out onto Randall and they're going to continue down to Lewis to Merchant Drive and they're going to go out by McDonald's there, which is going to create more traffic up and down Lewis. And I, I know people are going to say, really, how many cars at a time? But honestly, take the time to go out there at 3:35, 3:40 in the afternoon and, and then come back with an honest opinion as to if you were a driver, which route you would take. So not only is this affecting Sterling Manor, which my heart goes out to how they are going to be affected by this, it's also affecting the adjoining communities and their traffic. Um, the last point I would like to make is that I know that, um, it was briefly touched on, um, the funding resources that there was going to be a one-time payment to the Geneva School District of $66,000, I believe. Um, I guess my question is, what are the funding resources that are, how is it going to affect the funding resources that are going to be made available to these extra residents of Geneva, um, for our library, for our police department, for our fire and our emergency, our park district, all those other things that go into our community? I guess is my question. We all work very hard to live here, to raise our children, and I'm sure these residents that are going to be living there, if this goes through, are going to work very hard as well because they want to be in a well community with great schools. I'm just worried how it's going to affect myself, my family, that is my greatest, my greatest concern right now. Thank you very much and I hope that, um, the planning commission takes, um, all of our concerns and answers all of our questions. And if they are not answered tonight, I hope that they will agree to, um, to delay an answer as to if this project is going to move forward to the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The commission now recognizes Karen Damaris. Karen, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, um, my name's Karen Damaris. I live at, um, on Lewis Road. I've been here for 25 years. I have a question and comment. Um, I have a question about the onsite manager. It was kind of vague, uh, what the hours of this person would be. And, uh, I'm assuming since you said business hours, it's only nine to five, Monday through Friday. So there's no evening coverage or weekend coverage, if that could be clarified? Um, I also have a question about zero tolerance. I may not understand what zero tolerance means. Uh, I lived here 25 years, like I said. I'm home alone a lot and I walk at night by myself sometimes because I've always felt safe here. I, I'm really concerned about the safety of our neighborhood due to this proposed project. So I did FOIA the city's police records for calls to the Burton Foundation projects in Illinois and Wisconsin. I receive pages and pages of logs from my queries and I see hundreds of calls for noise complaints, parking complaints, animal complaints, suspicious persons, trespassing, criminal damage to property, driving complaints, disturbance complaints, remove subject calls, theft, check building calls, suspicious incidents, threats, disorderly conduct, criminal trespass, suspicious auto and neighborhood trouble, and I'm just getting started. When I look at the police logs for the Burton Foundation projects, I'm very concerned for the safety of our neighborhood. And it's likely that crime is going to follow if there are other projects or any indication. So I urge this council to vote no on this project as it is for the safety of our community. Thank you.
The commission now recognizes Tony Urban. Tony, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony. Tony Urban, go ahead and unmute yourself. Tony, are you there? Uh, he's not responsive. Guess we'll go to the next one. So we will move on to Jill Wilger. Jill, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Uh, before I begin, I just want to let, uh, the commission know that I just received a text from my neighbor and they said they cannot stay logged in, that the city webinar manager had sent them a new link and it still doesn't work. And he says there are 60 attendees and it seems like the site can't handle them all. So they are very concerned about making sure that this commission hears them, which is their due process right at this public hearing. So anyway, my name is Jill Wilger. I live at 2615 Cedar Avenue. My husband and I have been Geneva residents for 26 years. And the property under consideration this evening was owned open space when we moved here 26 years. And that open space designation solidified our decision to move here because we enjoyed the atmosphere and the openness that Geneva offered. This land is home for beautiful wildlife. I've seen deer and fox and geese and the crane, but if Emma's Landing will be approved, much of this wildlife will disappear. I hope that this commission has driven past this site and through nearby neighborhoods in order to get an understanding of this land's uniqueness and to gauge the traffic issues for yourself. Don't just rely on the plans. I do have reservations regarding Emma's Landing. First of all, its property values. This commission directed the Burton Foundation at its March meeting to be factual, and that's a quote, "to provide information on the impact Emma's Landing may have on surrounding property values." They didn't do it. They did not provide that information in their submitted documents. It would be reckless for this commission to move forward with this development and potentially find out later that this property values were negatively impacted. That is why we have a hearing and why these hearings are so crucial. This is the time to vet issues such as property value. Now, there are several affordable housing studies, but a 2017 affordable housing market analysis was done at the Campana Property in Batavia. And that analysis concluded that there would be a negative impact on property values and this negative impact extends a mile away from affordable housing units. Now, this hits too close to home for me and it concerns me. And this commission cannot in good faith make a finding that Emma's Landing will not diminish the property values of adjacent properties. And the Burton Foundation has not provided a market analysis to state otherwise. Furthermore, I'm concerned about the traffic. Now, a previous speaker indicated that traffic issue had been dealt with. And of course, I believe that he may be sitting on the board of the Burton Foundation or work for the Burton Foundation. But nevertheless, traffic is of an ongoing concern. This city knows Kaneville is problematic. It just reduced the speed on Kaneville right by Emma's Landing. And they did it because residents could not pull out of their subdivision. The commission requested the Burton Foundation address traffic concerns on Fargo, will it be, where it will be most impacted. And Fargo and Kaneville is the most impacted intersection. We all know that. Traffic can back up a block sometimes, as a previous caller stated. Yet the Burton Foundation did not provide information regarding this intersection. And its traffic study was done in June during the pandemic, when most of us were working from home and the kids were in school. Lastly of my concerns is Emma's Landing is just too dense and not in keeping with the single-family homes across the street or the townhomes in the area. Across the street from Emma's Landing is Heritage Court. It's a similar sized lot of Emma's Landing. There are only 20 townhome units on that parcel. This development seeks 45 units on a horizontal layout, not vertical. They're also going to put in an, an emergency access road, a road, a park, a management building, a retention pond, 15 parking spaces and a partridge in a pear tree. There's just too much on that land. 50% of that land's current space will be covered in concrete and the water overflow issues that have occurred for years will continue. And a couple other questions that I just would like to ask is, will there be an Illinois crime-free rider on the lease? That may help with, um, screening potential criminal activity on the property. Another question I have is, has this...
Ma'am, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but what was that last thing you said? I didn't quite catch it. Illinois what?
About the crime-free housing.
Illinois crime-free housing.
Yeah, there is, um, Illinois has, uh, Illinois crime-free, um, housing riders, addendums for leases. Many municipalities encourage their landlords to go through training, um, to learn how to implicate and, um, use these riders so that if there is ongoing criminal activity in certain areas that they're able to, um, take legal action quickly against, you know, the violators.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. I just was not aware of that. All right.
Okay. And then, as I said, the other question I have is, other than the proposed Emma's Landing, is there any other townhome community in Geneva that had to rely on an emergency access road for health and safety purposes? And in this case, at Emma's Landing, if it must remain for the safety of the residents, could we push it back a little bit and maybe put a landscaping shield in front of it? Um, so those are my questions, but until, um, the Burton Foundation answers issues with regard to property values as raised by the commission in March and an accurate traffic study and traffic counts, um, I just simply cannot, uh, support this development. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, I just want to apologize for people that are having problems getting into the session on the webex and stuff. There are no limits to, to the number of people we can put on it, so we do apologize if you're having issues. Certainly your other options are to send correspondence letters directly to City Hall as many people have already done. We've received many, many letters today and over, over the week. And then also you have options, you can't participate in the hearing, but you can watch the hearing on YouTube or live on community cable. So we do apologize. Continue to let us know if you can't get in or our, our website person will help out. Thank you. Okay, the commission now recognizes Alexander Galavaca. Alexander, go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hello, everybody. My name is Alexander Galavaca. Um, thank you for letting me speak at this meeting. As you can hear from my accent, um, I am immigrant, um, and, uh, I only live in, uh, 872 Good Avenue, uh, which is across, uh, this planned development for only four years, but I spent over 30 years to get here. So my first concern is, uh, obviously all I have is a house and all I have to, uh, give to my family when I am not around is this house and this property. And I'm very concerned with, uh, how this development will affect, uh, property value and future of my children. I work very hard and, um, I've been through horrible places and harsh and horrible circumstances to get here. Um, this is my affordable place, which I'm proud to afford. And to do this, I commute every day to work 60 miles one way and 60 miles back. So having, uh, potential traffic jams at near entrance to area where I live, uh, concerns me a lot. Now, uh, the study you've done on this traffic, um, where I came from, Ukraine, it's one of the most corrupted countries on the face of earth, they would laugh on it. You took evidence collected through global pandemic where 100% of people were not commuting, not to schools, not to homes. And many, of, many of my neighbors even didn't do groceries, it was delivery. Uh, last but not least, um, we are proud to be here, we are proud to have equal opportunities. And I don't quite understand what kind of opportunity you are given by placing a large amount of people in this supported, um, community, gated community without access to jobs, access to transportation, access to nothing. You're just building another ghetto here. And I'm Jewish by origin and I know what I'm talking about. Thank you very much. Continue with yourself.
All right, thank you, sir. The commission now recognizes Scott McLeod. Scott, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead and speak into the mic.
Sure. Sure, my name is Scott McLeod. I live on Walnut Ave here in Geneva. And I do agree that, that Geneva needs more affordable housing. Uh, this is right in my backyard, you can tell from my, my street address, but I think we're doing it wrong. There are statistics that very clearly show that, that the most prized possession we all have and what we work for is our home. It's our biggest investment for very many Americans and many Americans and those that want to be residents here strive for that, they work hard for that. And there's stats that show that, that those that own homes are 25% more likely to graduate from high school, 116% more likely to graduate from college, 12 times more wealthier in 10 years. But it's very clear this is important and it's important to a lot of people, but we're doing it wrong. We're talking about rentals, we're talking about renting. And when those people rent, those that can't afford to buy or have a mortgage, they pay a thousand dollars and how much of that goes to savings? Zero, but it goes to annual, it goes to maintenance. Zero. It goes to a landlord, it goes to maintenance, it goes to mortgage. There is zero saved. If we can look at doing this property a little differently, like some of our neighbors have done in surrounding towns I've mentioned before, Aurora and the Neighborhood Project, formerly Emmanuel House. They're successful, and they're breaking generational poverty cycle by creating homeowners. So I would ask that we reconsider the use of the property, not veering from affordable housing, but not rentals, more of an ownership opportunity. Density is a concern. Traffic is a concern. Flooding is a concern. The way the entrance of the neighborhood is offset from that of the adjacent townhome properties is a concern. Impact on is a concern. The costs of... These are all valid concerns. But I think in Geneva, we all live here because we love it. We all brought ourselves to be in here. And so I think we should be better. We shouldn't check that box that is funding this. It's the JP Morgan Chase Banks and big names Tracy mentioned before at the previous meetings that fund these that are the owners behind it. So let's not check their boxes. Let's check ours for Geneva and do better and break the generational poverty cycle. Working-class poverty is a trap. Owning your home is the way home. So let's do it different. Let's look at other proposals from other vendors. It's still my understanding that you've only seen one, and that's the one we're talking about tonight from the Burton Foundation. Nothing else. Nothing about habitat that you haven't... Nothing about the... You mentioned groups standing here in Aurora or any others that I'm not sure enough to know about. But please know it's in my better care and it's important to me. I agree with many of the consellings. I do love this town. I think we can be better. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.
The commission now recognizes Stephanie S. Stephanie, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, perfect. I just wanted to make sure. I want to thank everyone, the commission, for your time this evening.
Ma'am?
Although this is a very...
Ma'am?
Go ahead. Sorry?
Please, please give us your address as well.
Sorry, this is Stephanie Stewart. I'm at 2923 Caldwell Lane. I'm in the Sterling Manor subdivision.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I want to thank the commission. I appreciate your time tonight, although this is a very awkward, difficult way to hold this kind of a meeting. As many other people have noted, I've received numerous phone calls and texts from very upset residents that they can't join the call. They wanted to speak, and they can't. They have to join through the YouTube livestream. We were also told there would be a chat option. There's no chat option. So just very difficult and not ideal, but we will deal with it. So I want to talk about a couple things tonight. And I'm going to start off with an economic impact study that I submitted. As far as I know, I'm the only one that has submitted one. That includes the Burton Foundation having not submitted one. The economic impact study I submitted was completed in 2017, October 2017. And it was done in regards to the proposed affordable housing rental community that was to be built on the old Campana site at Route 31 and Fabian Boulevard. Lance Romella of Housing Trends in St. Charles, Illinois, did this study. And his in-depth study found that neighborhoods immediately adjacent to newly developed affordable housing communities had a lower appreciation rate, as low as 50% of the appreciation rates of surrounding neighborhoods. That's up to half a mile. At a mile away, those homes appreciate at 75% of the appreciation rate of homes outside of one mile. Meaning, with the current proposed property that the Burton Foundation wants to put in, this will affect the homeowner value for Ginger Lane, Randall Square, Sunset Prairie, Onbretwood's Pond, and Sterling Manor. We are easily talking about 1,000 residents who will be earning half the appreciation rate as their neighbor two miles away. There's no way that anyone on that committee that we're listening to tonight can honestly think that that's okay. And I don't think that any of you can honestly say that you would buy a home over here tomorrow knowing that if the appreciation rate in Geneva is 3% this year, you're only going to get 1.5%. No one would do that. Everyone invests for a reason. They invest for a rate of return. No one's going to take 50% of an offer when they can go somewhere else and make more money. That's just logic. Another thing I want to talk about, I realize that that study is three years old, but in retrospect, it is comparable to our area. And let's be fair, Tracy submitted a traffic study that was done in June during a pandemic when there was nobody in school. So if that's considered legitimate, then I honestly think an economic impact study from three years ago is definitely more than adequate. This entire time since March of 2020, Tracy has been claiming that no one who makes $50,000 or less can afford to buy a home or live in Geneva. Not anyone's business on this call. But when I bought my home in Geneva five years, I made $50,000 on the dot. If I can do it, anybody can. And I don't appreciate a claim that that makes it sound like I can't afford to live here because I worked. I did it. I own my own home, and I didn't take a handout to get it. Looking at the proposed property that Tracy wants to build on, it's disappointing to see the density of the community and the direction that the units are facing. The same parcel of land directly across Lewis Road from that proposed development has only 20 townhomes, a retention pond, and a retention area. May I ask Tracy why it makes sense to cram twice as many units, actually, more than twice as many units, on the same piece of land? And I already know the answer to it, and it's money. Because she can't afford to do the project and make money on the project unless there's 45 units. But it seems that in order for her to make money, it's at the expense of every single homeowner around her for at least a one-mile radius. How is that fair to the residents and homeowners who have worked and saved and done what they need to do for her to get her project to move forward? There is a better way to do this, and it's not her way. I know that the issue with how the units look and the backs of them facing Lewis Road has been brought up multiple times. But my issue with that is that by having the backs of the homes face Lewis Road, current residents and homeowners will now be forced to drive into their neighborhood and see the catch-all backs of those units every single time they come in. And while the Burton Foundation is very quick to say they have zero tolerance, they don't put up with that, there are rules, there are regulations, I can say from personal experience that when I went through and I looked at two different developments the Burton Foundation has been a part of, one in Sterling and one in Rock Falls, it was filled with possessions all over outside. Overgrown landscaping, bike chain defenses, which in March 2020, at the planning and zoning meeting, Tracy said that's cause for eviction. Based on what I saw in the spring of this year, there was a lot of people up for eviction, but I highly doubt that they were. Everyone has said that we need inclusionary housing in Geneva. And it would be inclusionary to have the doors of those units she wants to build facing Lewis Road. So the new residents are part of the neighborhood. They can meet their fellow neighbors when they're outside. Tracy has it set up right now so they have their backs to their neighbors. That says to me, we're not included, we're secluded. If everyone wants to add inclusionary affordable housing to Geneva, they need to do it the right way, and it needs to be included in all newly developed neighborhoods. Why wasn't this a requirement for the proposed property at Duke &amp; Lee's on Third Street? Why isn't this a requirement for the proposed property at the Old Mill Race Inn property? Why is it that it's only being placed out here in one spot? If we're going to be an inclusionary city, that means we have to be inclusionary everywhere in the city, not in one part of the city. I think that there's a right way to do this. The density is way too much. The density needs to be cut in half. The direction of the units needs to be changed, and it needs to be a requirement throughout the entire city. I've missed half of my comments and notes. I know a lot of things have already been said, but a few things I do want to bring up. There's been talk about management onsite, their hours, all of that. I just wanted to point out that when I went and visited two properties in the spring, Rock Falls and Sterling, no one was onsite. It was a Sunday. There was no management there. One actually had a closed sign. I wanted to bring up the police reports. Many of us have FOIA'd the police reports. I know there's a zero-tolerance claim. But I would like to point out that the first few things on page one of a FOIA request from a Burton Foundation property lists criminal sexual assault, domestic battery, and aggravated assault. I consider those zero-tolerance. However, they're listed multiple times under the same address, which is very concerning to me. And I would like to ask how Section 8 housing will work with this property because it has been said that due to the state funding that was received, Section 8 housing vouchers would be accepted and would have to be accepted. And I would like to know that. I think there's a much better way to do this. I feel like this is just going to be such a strain on the city of Geneva, the community, especially those of us right around in the area. The traffic is horrendous. I know multiple people have brought it up. I've actually had to change my work schedule to accommodate traffic issues over here. So the fact that a traffic study was done in June during a pandemic when no school was going on is just appalling to me. I think that the committee needs to pause this. I think we need to take a hard look at what we are trying to accomplish as a community and then look at the options and then put together an adequate plan because from the get-go, this has been on autopilot at 100 miles an hour, and it needs to slow down, and it needs to be done correctly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
The commission now calls upon Sarah Connolly. Sarah, go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Connolly. I'm at 732 Lewis Road. My husband John and I have been in Geneva for 31 years. We've lived at this resident for 25 years. This was our dream home coming here. We loved it. And we've raised our three daughters here. It's been a great experience. And I would just hate to see the wrong thing go in that particular parcel of land that could be used for something I feel is even more beneficial. We have an aging population in Geneva. We have people, it's no secret that there is a mass exodus of people leaving Illinois for surrounding states because they simply cannot afford to live here anymore. And especially, especially in our community because of these sky-high property taxes we pay. Now, my husband John and I did not benefit any of, besides the library and our beautiful nature here. Our children were at St. Peter's School, so we didn't even get to realize the benefits of the public school system until our daughters were in high school. But that was our choice. That's fine. But what concerns me is that there's really no option for seniors on a fixed income to stay in our city on a fixed income. I mean, everybody, my neighbors, we all talk about moving out because it's too expensive to live here once you're retired, unless you are a very wealthy person. And I just feel like, first of all, we could have half the number of units. We could have, we could make it more adapted to a senior facility. And I would love to see them have it be economically subsidized for senior living. There wouldn't be the amount of cars. We're including people from Geneva that have already paid astronomical taxes and worked in this community and have worked countless hours, maybe, of philanthropic activities and supported our town. But yet, I have not heard one thing, one statistic as to the number of Geneva residents, senior citizens or younger, that actually will be living in this community. I don't even, I haven't heard one thing as to how the application process will be done so that it does favor Geneva residents. Okay? That is one of my big concerns. The other thing that really concerns me is the whole issue of the traffic. My husband and I, when we had young children, were already concerned about the amount of traffic on Lewis Road once Lewis Road opened up to Canville Road and it became a cut-through street. Okay? And it's only gotten worse. The traffic's only gotten worse. And with the additional units in this development, as previously stated, the traffic on Fargo and Canville is horrific. You cannot go north on Fargo and Canville. There is no right-turn lane. There should be, but there's not. So traffic backs up horrifically. I'm a little concerned about the lack of the number of cars that are allowed in this development per unit. Tracy had mentioned that it's not ethical that she is able to limit the number of cars per unit. So are these cars all going to pile up on Lewis Road and be another, yet an eyesore and a traffic hazard parked outside of that development? I would also like to, because of the technical difficulties that are going on, my husband John Connolly, who is a township trustee, I would like for him to be able to speak, but he can't get on his computer because he's not getting the link. Would it be possible that I could have him also speak?
Oh, yes. No, absolutely. If he needs, if he wants to speak, he can. He can do so.
Okay, thank you. Here's my husband, John.
Hey, guys. How you doing? It's John Connolly. About three comments here. I'll try to be brief. First one, my wife mentioned the traffic and speeding on Lewis Road. 45 units would mean potentially at least, you know, 90-plus cars that's going to add to it. They're going to be going west on Lewis to go up to the Commons. I did a speed study for the Geneva Police Department in 1999, long time ago, right? But it was bad then. And believe me, I received threats when I was doing it, but the police department has supported me, so great for them. But I tell you what, it's worse now than it was then when I did it. This is only going to make it even worse. I've heard nothing, zero, about any addressing of design features to Lewis Road to control that. There's nothing been done on that, and it's just going to get worse. So second comment, it's been stated many times. If we're a community, let's embrace affordable housing. Let's do it. Let's do it as a community, not just cram it in the Sterling Manor subdivision right here. Why one neighborhood have to do it all, right? Spread it around. Everybody share the wealth. Let's do that. Third comment, my wife touched on it. You know, as a Geneva Township trustee, we run the senior center, oversee it all. These seniors want to stay here. Whatever we do, wherever we put it, at least 20% has to be allocated, in my opinion. Seniors only, 62 and over. That's it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, John.
Okay, take care.
Just want to mention again, if we've already heard about traffic, the flooding, some of the land use concerns, don't need to hear again those concerns, you know, in long form. If you're concerned about it, mention it. That's fine. But we're fully apprised of that. You don't need to repeat it if it's already mentioned. What we are looking for is other items that have not been brought before us. So certainly, feel free to add those as needed.
All right. The commission now recognizes Chris Humes. Chris, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hello, can you hear me?
Just barely.
Is this any better?
Oh, that's much better. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, I'm Chris Humes. I live at 2724 Peterson. I'm in Sterling Manor. I sent in a letter or an email today that kind of recognized some of my concerns. A lot of them have been already asked as questions, but I wanted to make sure I was on the record. So, you know, traffic, definitely concerned about the water issue. I was trying to understand what the civil engineer was kind of taking us through. It felt inadequate. I'm not a civil engineer. I am an engineer. inadequate. Um, I'm not a civil engineer. I am an engineer, but you guys are in better place to judge that than me. Um, the donation, um, process, I'm not familiar with either on the Park District and the schools. Um, I assume that's part of a development program. I would like to understand that a little bit better. It seems a pretty small amount for schooling. Uh, quite frankly, someone else has already raised that also. And, uh, concerns about property values, as people have mentioned also, and engagement from the Burton Foundation. Uh, we heard at the city council meeting that was gonna happen. Understand we're in pandemic, so give a little leeway there, but, uh, you know, you know, talk to the residents. I mean, listen to us, please. And, uh, appreciate all the service that everyone is giving on this planning commission. So thank you for your service, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir.
The commission now calls upon Robin Kelton. Robin, go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, Robin Kelton, 820 Manchester Course, uh, Geneva. I want to start, um, by expressing my public support for the development of Emma's Landing, and I want to thank everyone who has put such effort into finding ways to build, uh, the inclusivity of our town and to point out then a few key facts regarding affordable housing. Um, but I do first want to say before anything else that I watched the three hours of March's meeting, and I think it's important to remind folks that the public has every right to comment on the use of land. For example, to think that a townhome in general is not good fit for the place, um, or the location site, that's perfectly fine. However, the moment that the councilor, anyone that is a member of a public starts talking about who can, cannot, should, or should not live in Emma's Landing, or who they do not want living in affordable housing, then our community is at risk of violating the Fair Housing Act, um, which essentially states that it is illegal to discriminate in the sale or renting, rental of housing. So comments that have been made about these types of people, um, various things, especially that came out in the March, uh, meeting are problematic at best, and I encourage us as a community when we talk about being, um, a place of upstanding values and beliefs to think about how we refer to people who we feel are different than ourselves. Um, next, I would like to point out some data to help sort of elucidate folks on common myths associated with, uh, affordable housing. So there is a concern, and we've heard it, about standards of building. There is a substantial amount of research that shows that, um, low-income house, tax credit housing is subject to building standards that are often higher than the local code, and that construction is monitored by a tax credit allocator, the investor in the tax credits, and any lenders. This oversight tends to lead to high-quality construction that usually includes a higher level of accessibility and a higher level of energy efficiency. Um, higher, uh, these types, I'm gonna call it LIHTC instead of saying low-income housing, tax credit housing each time, but LIHTC housing in higher-income areas usually benefits workers who are critical to communities such as beginning teachers, firefighters, police officers, and nurses. I've heard people talk about wanting to make sure that we are making our community accessible for the folks who work and serve in our community so that folks who live in Geneva can have the accessibility to live in Geneva. Um, but I also don't think we are in a position to discriminate and say that only people who serve our community may live in our community. Um, in terms of concerns about property values, there has been, um, there's a pretty lengthy meta-analysis that was done, um, that broke apart neighborhoods by their income levels and looked at the effects of property, um, depreciation in high-income neighborhoods where LIHTC developments were, um, built. Uh, those findings that meta-analysis had mixed results. There were some, there were a number of studies that showed no decline in housing, uh, like cost and depreciation. There was one that did show a negative trend. However, the effects of that study was small, and it showed that in a neighborhood with a median income above $54,000, that there leads to a housing price decline of approximately 2.5% within point, 0.1 mile of the development. Um, and that that is largely experienced by majority white communities. That seems to suggest that, um, the decline is related to, um, segregation within race, less about, um, having affordable housing in the community. I would also like to point out that Geneva has, uh, reported diversity of 96.3% white, 5.7% Latino, and 0.1% black. Um, there are concerns I've heard raised about crime. There is a very large body of research examining this relationship between crime and public housing, and it shows that rather than increases in crime, that there are, um, likely to be small, or small increases in surrounding neighborhoods, but more often likely to be, um, decreases in crime. So, um, I'm gonna give you one, uh, study in particular, Arby Dickerson and Macey, 2013, um, failed to find any type of increase in crime in the area and rather found decreases. They thought that this may, um, be in fact because the neighborhoods had essentially more eyes on folks, but the development itself was invested in their, their neighbors and their community. Um, I also, I'm almost done. I also heard worries about schools. Again, research is gonna push back on that and say that is a myth, and rather that the, um, inclusion of children from affordable housing developments seem to show no, um, reduction in school performance. Rather, um, there was a study by D. and Mordich in 2013 that found the addition of new LIHTC units in higher-income areas such as Geneva had a positive impact on performance ratings of nearby elementary schools and no effect on passing rates for fifth-grade students in standardized tests. Geneva, um, I did a little digging on the statistics for the school district here, and it seems to show that Geneva has trended an increase in spending per student of about 6.4%, but enrollment has gone down 2.11%. As a whole, um, low-income enrollment went down 11.54%, and the total low-income Geneva school district serves in general, or in total, is only 4.6. Um, I've heard people talk about 100 students entering the school district. If you do the math on that, that an increase of 100 students still does not overcome the low-enrollment drop of 2.1%, or 2.11%. Um, again, I want to express my support for Emma's Landing. I understand people have concerns, but I want to encourage folks to look at the research and the data, which seems to suggest that, um, this is an extremely valuable opportunity for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The commission now recognizes Cheryl Brennan. Cheryl, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, okay. Hi, good evening, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I, I wanna speak, uh, as to Emma's Landing. I had emailed in also. One of the things I wanted to say is, you know, we talk about inclusion in our community, and I am for affordable housing, for inclusion. I'm from Michigan originally, from a city that had a diversity ratio of 33%. So moving out here was almost like culture shock because it is, it's not very diverse, I will admit. But I, we need to do this right. We need to do it the proper way. Passing the city council, doing something under the cloak of a pandemic when people couldn't be in a meeting, because the Sanders didn't want to attend out of fear of getting sick, or family members who are, um, I have a family member who is at very, very high risk. I have to be extremely careful. So let's do this right. Let's table this. Let's talk about it. We've had, you've had this, um, plan in place to have affordable housing since 2015, yet every development that has gone into Geneva has not included affordable housing. Why? Why? Why not Mill Race? Why not Duke and Lees? Why? We need to, we're gonna include these people. Let's include them, not in one area of our community, all the areas of our community. You, that's where I'm from. They, people were everywhere, not just in one section. That's what you need. We need that. This community, you need to listen to the, the citizens and not do what the city council has done, not hear our voices, not include us in this decision. I thank you for your time and patience tonight. I know it's late, and you guys are probably ready to wrap up, and I, I just please implore you to listen to us, and let's table this and talk about it. Once, once this pandemic or once we can have reasonable-sized gatherings, 50 people is not a lot of people. And I went to one of those city council meetings, and there were not many people there. And I think it's out of fear of this pandemic, 'cause no one wants to get sick, 'cause we don't know the end, the outcome that could happen. So I wish you all well, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you.
The commission now recognizes Kevin Silha. Kevin, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Kevin, are you there?
Kevin, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. Everybody hear me now?
There you are. Yes, we can hear you fine.
Excellent. Uh, this is Kevin Silha, 496 Lewis Road, Wentworth Pond. And, uh, just wanted to say that, you know, my family's lived here in Geneva since 2005, spent 15 years on the east side in the townhouse, uh, been here on the west side for five years. And just kinda wanna give a little context on where we come from, my wife and I. So before moving into the great town of Geneva, we lived in North Aurora in a small apartment, probably, you know, pretty similar to the place that is being proposed. While we were there, we saw drugs sold, music played too loud, and tires slashed, and our cars broken into. Um, I'm not coming here, you know, with speculation or because I read something or watched the news. I've lived in places like this, and I see how bad things can get. The culmination of our time in North Aurora was a shooting at the bowling alley, when I had to throw my wife to the ground, cover her because gang members were shooting at each other. That's not what Geneva is about. Now, I wanna say that Emma's Landing people paint a rosy picture. And say that this young teacher moves in, you know, young Geneva teacher with the lowest salary. Great, but I'm not worried about her. I'm worried about the family members who may be down on their luck when she moves in. What happens when she brings in a drunk abusive boyfriend, or a sister with a meth habit, or nieces and nephews who try to sell drugs to our Geneva high school students?
Sir, 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 I'm gonna have to interrupt you. Um, we can't, we can't predict who will live in these units and what kind of lives they're gonna lead. I mean, we just can't do that.
Well, let me ask my questions, man, okay? Let me ask my question.
Fine, please ask your question.
Okay, so how can we ensure that restrictions will be enforced to keep these situations out where these good-hearted people bring their bad-natured relatives in and turn our community into a place of crime? Secondly, how are these property managers being screened to ensure that they are enforcing these rules and making sure that they are keeping bad people out of our neighborhoods? And
Okay.
Those are, those are my questions. Um, last but not least, I also wanna say that I have senior parents who have had their health deteriorate over the past year. Now my brother and I are in the situation where we need to sell their home, and we need to get them into one of these senior communities that have a one- or two-year waiting list. I strongly advocate for considering a senior community type of waiting here because we have many, many Geneva seniors who need help, especially in these hard times with this pandemic that's going on. So just wanted to get my feelings out there and get a little more information on how these residents, how these property managers are chosen, and how we are gonna ensure that the right people live in this neighborhood and the wrong element not for me. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, well, right, yeah, right now, uh, we don't show anybody else with a hand raised, so we'll give you a little time if you're on right now, and was just waiting to, for the queue to go through. Uh, if you would wish to speak, please raise your hand at this time.
Karen Damaris, uh, the commission now recognizes you. Go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Karen?
Karen, it looks like you're self-muted. Go ahead and unmute yourself if you'd like to proceed with your second testimony. There we go.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Good, okay, great. No, Karen, Karen's, Karen's my wife. She actually spoke earlier.
Okay, and who are you, sir?
Yes, thank you. My name is Don Inman. I live down the road from the proposed development. I live at 748, uh, Lewis Road.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure. And, you know, I know that you guys have heard, and I'm not gonna say ad nauseam, a lot of really good comments from the citizens here. Uh, you know, when you talk about safety, you talk about traffic, you talk about property values, those are real concerns, but I'm not gonna talk about those things. You've heard them, you're gonna write them down, you're gonna answer them. What I'm gonna talk about is our fiduciary responsibility to serve the citizens of Geneva and how that should take place. You know, what, what I see, and I'm an outsider, if you will, is I see somebody's come in with a song and dance, and all of a sudden, that's the best thing for the city of Geneva. But I also see, just like the set of drawings that were briefly displayed, that is a really bad design. You can even just start with the road that's going straight into a very major thoroughfare. I hope nobody thinks that that's an acceptable, safe way to look. But all of a sudden, you know, when I hear these people and I hear that they haven't been heard, and I hear that there's really no way for us to sit down together and talk, and some people can't get on, that's not the way to listen to your citizens. And as I, and like I said, you know, we have fiduciary responsibility to these people. I think one of the best things you can do is halt your process because I, you know, just looking at things like the traffic study, okay, I heard the time that it was taken. My question is how tainted is that? Did the city go out and try to do a traffic study, and instead of being influenced by somebody who has a desire to use the property, how about you guys go out and do a traffic study that benefits the citizens instead of listening to somebody that wants to benefit a property? You know, and so it's kinda like a reverse philosophy that I've been watching. You guys are supposed to be protecting us. All I'm hearing is, hey, these guys got a pretty set of drawings, which by the way, when you look at that, if the designer was on the line, he would not be proud of that work. It's nothing you guys should be proud of to look at in your community. This is very cardboard-colored painted buildings, and nobody's even, you know, when you look at it from a helicopter view, it looks lovely. Walk down the street and do a perspective of what that's gonna look like from everybody that drives down that street. You know, so there's a lot of things that I'm seeing that aren't really going in the right direction, and I really urge you to stop. I urge you to start over. I urge you to, even before you get involved, and what's the building look like is a really strong, crystal-clear, um, citizen protective agreement with the person who's gonna manage this, because what's there pretty the first week is not what it's gonna look like. It's not gonna be run unless you have a really strong agreement with a developer about, here's what's gonna happen, people. This is our community. This is not something you're gonna move in. Bring renters in that don't own it. That brings a part-time manager in that's gonna watch over it. So I really want you guys to think a little bit differently about what this development, not just here, but any development that you bring into Geneva. You guys are the boss, not the person that wants to make the money. And you're there to represent citizens, not there to have a good, happy smile and, you know, think you've done a good thing. I'm okay with inclusion. That's kind of a buzzword. What we're talking about is people that can't afford housing. And why did we go to rental properties when there's an opportunity for ownership? That's the real ticket too, right? So if you're gonna go down that road, build houses that people live in. Don't build temporary housing that's live in. Don't build temporary housing that's really throwaway. It's going to dispose itself. I'm in the construction business. I'm not just in a construction business. I work for the government. And when you put a building together, you put something like that together, you know it's not going to work, look nice later. And the same thing with the drawings. I didn't see anything about utilities. I didn't see anything about, well, what are the utility run-ins to the place? Do we have any development outside of this development that the Geneva people have to pay for or deal with during construction? So, you know, I'm not going to take too much more time. I'm not really going to ask you to write my questions down. I'm asking you to think. And I'm asking you to think what's right. And what you're doing is, in my opinion, is not right. And when I talk with people like Kirk Allen over at Edgar County, he goes, man, we want to look into this because something's wrong. And when he says something like that to me, I know there's something that we should stop instead of move forward because it's only going to get worse. So with that, I do appreciate all the work that you're doing, but I want you to not be song and dance. I want you to work hard for the community. I appreciate your time. And I would request the next caller to be a little bit more clearer and direct than I was. Thank you much for your night.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
The commission now recognizes Erin Bald. Erin, please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm Erin Bald. I'm at 338 Davis Road, which is actually in Batavia, but we are zoned for Geneva schools. Both my children attend Geneva schools. And I was also a graduate of Geneva, same with my husband, my oldest daughter, and both sets of our parents still live in Geneva. Both have lived there 25 and 40 years. I would like to voice my support for Emma's Landing tonight. I believe that Geneva is long overdue for affordable housing. And considering that we are nearly 200 residences shy of the 10% requirement for affordable housing, we cannot continue to pass these opportunities up. While I wasn't in attendance for March's meeting, I have watched every minute of that meeting and have listened to every minute this evening. And I was deeply disturbed and ashamed of many of the things that people were saying in March's meeting. And I continue to be disturbed by how many people continue to talk about who will be living in these residences, who qualifies it for them, what their backgrounds are. As Robyn mentioned earlier, it's critically important to remind everyone that these remarks regarding who will live there, making assumptions about crime, are all in violation of the Fair Housing Act. And I would be happy to get into contact with the ACLU to look into this a little bit further. I also implore our community members to ask themselves why they believe that those who serve our community, be it our first responders, our nurse aides, our childcare providers, our library aides, should not be able to live in the community in which they serve. I believe that in order to function as a community, we need our community members fulfilling all the roles our society requires. And I fervently believe that these community members deserve an opportunity to live where they serve and work. I'd like to also point out that it seems that most of those who are opposed to this housing are only opposed because they do not want it in their backyard. I believe that no matter where you propose affordable housing in Geneva, you will have this same sort of classist backlash. And I noted that nearly every single person who spoke in March stated how they agreed with affordable housing, but, and there was a big but every time. And I'll directly quote one of the attendees who was here tonight and in March. And she said, I believe in affordable housing, but it's not necessary in the town that I live in, in this specific area. It's not the right place for it. And I encourage everyone to look up NIMBYism, N-I-M-B-Y, to learn a little bit more about that and why that's incredibly problematic. I've also heard a lot of people say people should just own private homes. I find that, I continue to be shocked at people's ignorance, that everyone is able to just purchase a private home or that a private home is the right type of building for them. There are many people who benefit from townhomes, seniors, those with disabilities. So a lot of these statements really felt ignorant. Again, I want to reiterate that I'm in full support of Emma's Landing. I sincerely hope that you move forward with this project. And I thank all of you for all this work that you do. I now see how much abuse you have to put up with, and I am so sorry for that. That is not representative of all of the community. So thank you very much. Have a good night.
All right, thank you.
The commission now recognizes Karen Fitzsimmons. Karen, please proceed to unmute yourself and then proceed with your testimony.
Hi, this is Karen Fitzsimmons. I live at 2740 Peterson Court in Geneva. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I would like to start with stating that although I am opposed to the density and the taking up of our green space and where the property located, I want to start with saying that affordable housing in Geneva does not define somebody's character. It's not providing out how much money they make, or by no means does that make them a bad person. This platform, also this platform that we're having this meeting on is very inappropriate. The flashing of the people, the sound in the background, the echoes, it's very horrible. But I will also say that the biggest drug busting in Geneva was Millbrook, where there are homeowners. So people might want to watch how they're judging other people. Because that is, that is just, I'm sorry, I'm just going to say ignorant. I also think that people that don't live in Sterling Manor, that want to make their comments about how we're NIMBYs are absolutely wrong. In my mortgage career, I have helped many, many people go from being renters to homeowners. They're absolutely in need for affordable housing, but it should also be in like-kind areas. I got a beautiful little magazine from Geneva Today, Geneva Living, Bringing People Together. And one of the statements in there is that Theodore Roosevelt once said, the comparison to the sucky joy. And it is easy for parents and families to lose their joy when they attempt to prepare their life for the people next door down the street or the church next to them. So my point reading that is, there's plenty of areas in Geneva where you can build affordable housing, where it's like-kind housing, where you're not looking across the street at the people that live in the $400,000 house. And you're living in this that is being labeled as affordable housing, that is being stuck in the middle of nowhere because Geneva doesn't want that, downtown Geneva. So I find all that kind of offensive. I also would like to say that my great-grandpa Wilson, three generations back built here, Frank Lloyd Wright built some of the houses around here, and his granddaughter, my stepmother, cannot afford to live in this community any longer on her own. She is a senior. There is nowhere for her to go. She can't get into any place. There is nothing. She doesn't need help. She doesn't need to live in a $5,000 a month community where all these big communities, you know, the one over here in Mill Creek that's just beautiful. But that's not what she needs. She needs a nice little condo townhouse that she can live in, that she can rent and she can afford. So there is a need for senior housing. And I know that that's been said, that there isn't a need for senior housing around here. And that's absolutely not true. I would also say that the developer seems to, Burton Foundation seems to be contradicting, statements seem to be kind of spinning and giving non-truth. And this decision seems to be already made by the city of Geneva. Just saying that this community is for Geneva residents and people that work in this community, that is a non-truth. They are getting either funding, they cannot limit people that live in Geneva or work in Geneva to that community. So saying that is a non-truth. And I really have a problem with that. They need to point blank say, we can't control who lives here. People can come from everywhere. They don't have to live or work in Geneva. So I would appreciate some honesty in this stuff. My other thing I'd like to say is that the density of the students, it's just way too high. You've got many, many people living in a small area between two times, they're back up to a road, they've got three railroad tracks down the way, they've got empty factories. Now, just if we want to talk about studies, which I think are a bunch of balloons, God, in half the time anyway, just like saying to a mother that there's a study that little boys like to play with trucks. Okay, well, not all little boys, but most mothers already know that, saying that the studies that you put people, you know, with low income, doesn't lower a property value, that's just not true. You talk to any real estate agent in this area when I discuss this, and the first words out of their mouth is zero to property value. So I really think that we could have an open conversation about the density, the way this is being structured. It doesn't need to be done while we are basically still in lockdown because COVID. This forum is not for what we're doing right now. When we started discussing this, the city of Geneva seems like they'd already kind of made their decision on this. So I am not even sure that us speaking makes anything, will make any difference. And when, you know, people want to talk about moving here, blah, 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 I'm, you know, third, fourth generation from around here, and my family can no longer afford to live in Geneva because there's no senior housing. So that's pretty much what I'd like to say. And I would like to ask Geneva City, Geneva to please handle this. Please let us come together, the people of the community. Please listen to our concerns. You know, this beautiful little magazine, the haves and the have-nots are very evident. And it's not because I think they're bad people. I think that people need to live in an area where people's socioeconomic is comparable, that they're not put in a subdivision where across the street, the kids have pools and trampolines and this and that. And these children don't have, may not have a lot. And then that's what they see with their neighbors having, that does cause problems. And that does make those children feel bad. And that's just not acceptable to me. So thank you for listening. And I would hope you've listened to some of our comments and take the time to do this under a different environment.
Thank you. Okay, I've been told that currently we have no hands raised. So if you are on the session and you wish to speak, please raise your hand and you will be recognized. So do we have anyone?
We do not.
Okay, so here's the last call. So anyone wishing to speak that's currently on this session, please raise your hand so you can be recognized. If not, we're going to move on to the second part.
We will just mention real quick that we did receive several emails during the meeting, during the public hearing, and those will be available online in the near future.
That's correct. Okay, so we don't have anybody else to speak. So obviously, we've taken an expansive amount of testimony here, three hours worth. We have a lot to cover in terms of the questions because we did not have editor of Q and A. So obviously, we have to submit the questions to the applicant and to staff. We also had, I don't know how many pages, 150-some pages of emails that were submitted, so that I have not had a chance to read. I just got them this evening. So I'm not sure what the commission's looking at, but I think it's probably advisable that we extend the public hearing to the 28th. Is it David?
Yes, the next available meeting would be the 28th.
So the 28th of January, just so we can process all the information that's been submitted up to this point, submit the questions to the applicant. I have staff time to evaluate and what was submitted and the questions that we posed. So I'm waiting to hear from my commissioners at this point. I'm sorry, I'm not even looking. Commissioner Evans?
I agree. We should have time to digest all this and allow staff and the applicant to pull together responses to all these questions. Doesn't seem possible to do all that this evening. So continuing to the 28th makes sense to me.
Commissioner Rittenhouse?
I'm not sure the proper Roberts-Rills border, but I would love to push this to the 28th and I'll do a motion right now.
Very good. That's what we're looking for.
Motion to push to the 28th.
January 28th, 7:00 PM?
Second, Evans?
It'll probably be virtual. It will be virtual. So, so 7, January 28th, 7:00 PM, virtual. We have a motion and a second to extend the public hearing.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Rebecca.
Some of the questions that are directed to the applicant, can we see some of the answers to those prior to the meeting?
Yeah, during the hearing, we will get that. But I wrote down quite a bit. I know the planners were writing it down. So, but yeah, we will go over that during the public hearing. So that's the extension. I'm sure we'll get some additional comments.
But we can't, I'm just asking, can we see any of the answers to some of those prior to the 28th?
No, they have to be disclosed in public. So, you know, we've got quite a bit of homework to do to get that lined up so that we can do it. You know, we did not have any cross-examination at all. So I'm assuming we'll probably get some, since the public hearing is open, I'm assuming we'll get additional public comments on the 28th, along with additional written materials that were submitted to the city. And that's all part of the process. So, but yeah, I think given the hour and the amount of material that we've already gone through, I think we need to extend to the 28th of January. Okay, hearing no other objections? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Rittenhouse?
Chairman, I guess, I'm confused on why Rebecca's question, why can't the questions that were posed be answered by Tracy prior to our 28th meeting so that in our mind, we can address those answers? And that can be made public to anybody that wants to see those so that we don't go through another exercise of comments on top of her trying to answer these questions? I think she should come to the table on the 28th, already answered the questions, and then she can clarify any, any additional questions about those answers.
I'll let the planners clarify that. And we also have counsel here, so either one can comment on that. Take team.
Commissioner, your question's certainly not inappropriate. Because this is an evidentiary process, we're, I mean, we're very cognizant of making the record We're, I mean, we're very cognizant of making the record in real time. So we will give the petitioner applicant, um, obviously, she's listened, she'll, she's taking notes. The planners are taking notes. She'll prepare a written response, but it has to be tendered to everybody at the same time. Um, she will be given an opportunity to respond verbally as well. Um, and that's part of the back and forth. So I, I know it doesn't seem reasonable, but the fact of the matter is, we, this is an evidentiary proceeding that needs to be done. Contemporaneous, with all information gleaned at the same time, as reasonable, uh, given the circumstances we're operating in, it's just safer to do it that way. Does that help, John, or no?
He answered my question, but I respectfully don't agree, but it is what it is.
That's fair.
Yeah, I mean, again, I think we need to be as open on this process as possible. And, um, it is, you know, we're, we're going to get additional materials as well. So, um, I don't have a problem doing it all on the 28th, so. Any other comments from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Mead?
Commissioner Mead here. Um, I'm fine, I'm fine tabling this and keeping it open until the 28th. Um, I do think we might want to, we've had some common themes. We've had some folks that have had a hard time getting in, but the longer this went and the more we heard, I didn't see the list of issues expanding much. We have the issue of traffic. We have the issue of runoff water control flooding. We have the issue of building orientation. We have density. We have the variances. We have property values. And we have questions on third-party management. Beyond that, I think most of the issues fell outside of appropriate land use. So if somebody's going to come forward, a new testimony is going to come forward on the 28th. If their testimony is going to be around these eight areas or seven areas I just laid out, that might not be the best use because we are fully aware that those are issues. And we're going to dissect all of those as a group, with the public and with the applicant on the 28th to come to a decision on how we're going to vote on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. I think, um, again, there were multiple, um, subbullets under each one of those categories, multiple questions under those categories. But, uh, and we'll have to sort all that out. But yeah, it does basically fall into those areas and, um, certainly there, since the hearing's open, if other people have other things to offer that haven't already been heard, that's something we'll certainly be interested in hearing about. So.
Commissioner Mead here. New topics, we're going to welcome the others. We're going to discuss in great detail and how it affects, um, you know, the use of the plan.
Yes, that's our primary mission here, so.
Right.
All right. Any other comments from the commissioners? If not, I have a motion and a second. Celeste, please call the roll.
Okay, to continue to January 28th, we want Evans?
Evans, aye.
Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Uh, my, pardon my pronunciation. Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Okay. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking's aye.
That passes.
All right. Thank you, Celeste. So for everyone that's currently on, this public hearing has been continued to January 28th at 7:00 PM. It will be sent, uh, we'll publish it out on the website. Links, again, we apologize for any technical difficulties that may have occurred for members of the public trying to access it. We try to resolve it as best we can. We'll be ever diligent to try to continue that process and get it better on the 28th. But it's a nature of the beast with the technical. So again, if you, uh, submit your questions in writing, that's certainly, we do, we do read the record. That's one of the reasons why we've, we continued the public hearing. So, uh, you know, definitely make your voices be heard. And I'd like to thank everybody for the time they took, waiting to give us testimony and input on this process. It's very appreciated. Okay. David, anything else we need to cover at this point?
Don't have any new business to discuss with the commissioner this evening?
Okay, with that, Commissioner Evans, it's your roll.
I get to be very popular this evening, I'm sure. Move to adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Dang, that's right. I forgot. We're not all sitting here. Man, I gotta learn all the rules. Okay, let's have a roll call for that, Celeste.
Okay, to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Who was it? You seconded the motion. I'm sorry.
Nobody did.
Mead will.
Mead just did.
Okay, Mead.
Commissioner Mead.
Okay, thank you. Um, for to adjourn, Halloman? Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Okay. Evans?
Evans, aye.
Metaskill?
Metaskill, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Rittenhouse?
Rittenhouse, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right, thank you. Thanks, commissioners. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Hopefully sometime we'll get together, do this on person. Bye.